Today is Tuesday, July 18th, 2023 and the time is 5:45 PM. I'd like to call to order this special closed session meeting for the City Council of the City of Emeryville. Members of the public can join us in person at 1333 Park Avenue in the City of Emeryville, or by joining us via Zoom using the link provided for at the top of the posted agenda. This time I'll ask if the clerk would please take the role.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Mora?
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Here.
And Mayor Bauders?
Here. Thank you. Now we'll turn to ex parte communications. Members, there's a significant amount of closed session items before you. Are there any items for which you'd like to make an ex parte communication? I see no members reporting. We have no ex parte communications to report. We'll now turn to public comment. A member of the public who wishes to comment for an item not on the closed session agenda or on the closed session agenda has two minutes to do so. There are no members presenting as requesting public comment here. Do we receive any comment cards for closed session?
No, Mayor.
No hands raised. Comment is closed. We'll turn to item five, which is the closed session. We will take items five, six, seven, eight, and nine, as well as their subparts in closed session and report out upon completion. This time, Madam Clerk, it's 5:46. We're adjourned to closed session.
The time is six thirty P M. I would like to ask if the city attorney would please reach out, I'm sorry, would please report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Attorney John Kennedy for the reporting out on closed session, agenda item eight point two point one. The claim of Michael Hunter. A ma- a motion was made by Vice Mayor Welch, which was seconded by Councilmember Mora to settle the property damage claim in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for towing costs incurred. The city council with all members present voted five to one, five to zero to approve the settlement.
And for all other items, there's no reportable action, is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The time is six thirty one. The meeting is adjourned. The time is six thirty one. I call to order this city council special study session for the city of Emeryville. Today is Tuesday, July eighteenth. And we are located here at the Civic Center at thirteen thirty three Park Avenue. You can also join us by participating in the link provided for on the agenda. Madam Clerk, please note that all members remain present at this meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
I move approval of the agenda. Second.
Thank you. Motion by Welch, second by Carr to approve agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. Thank you. Item four is ex parte communications. Are there any members who wish to report an ex parte communication on this item? Okay, I've had meetings with multiple members of the Emeryville community who are interested in the art center. All of them being residents, none of them being government or corporate stakeholders. Okay, item five is public comment. For items not on the agenda, a member of the public who wishes to comment for an item not on the agenda this evening has two minutes to do so. There will be separate public comment later for the study session. Any members of the public who wish to comment, please raise your hand for non-agenda items. Okay, and seeing no hands raised online, public comment for non-agenda items is closed, and we'll turn to item six, which is our study session. Six point one is the study session for the Emeryville Art Center. Chad Smalley.
Good evening. Mayor and members of the city council, I'm Chad Smalley. Deputy Director of Community Development, here to talk with you this evening about the Emeryville Art Center project. I'm going to give a really brief project history. Going to go over the objectives and the key elements, or sort of the guiding principles for the project that were established in twenty eighteen. I'm going to talk a little bit about various implementation options to move forward. Briefly touch on the budget, and then finally end with some discussion questions for you all for, for staff's direction. This is the result of the city council's request in April for a study session to occur in fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four on this topic. This is a aerial view of the property we're going to be talking about. It's directly behind City Hall. And it's about a thirty thousand square foot building at the corner of Fortieth and Hollis. So, very abbreviated project history. There's a lot more detail in this staff report on this, but to just hit the highlights. This property was acquired in two thousand and six by the redevelopment agency for the express purpose of developing a, a community arts center. And a plan was developed shortly thereafter in two thousand and six. In two thousand and eleven, another plan was developed and fully fleshed out and entitled. And at that point in two thousand and eleven, there was about a seven point six million dollar gap in funding to construct the project that was looking to be filled. And in two thousand and twelve, all redevelopment agencies were then dissolved statewide by action of, combined action of the legislature and the California Supreme Court. That threw the project into disarray because it became questionable as to whether the city would be able to retain the property. city would be able to retain the property and, and the funds that were, some of the funds that were allocated to the project, a plan was put together to reduce the scope of the project in 2012, but with the lingering uncertainty that was caused by the dissolution of the agency, the nonprofit organization that was formulated and that was in an agreement with the city dissolved, and the entitlements expired from the 2011 plan. In 2017, the city was successful in retaining the property, and it was transferred to the, from the agency to the city, along with $3.8 million in pre-dissolution non-housing bonds that were allocated to the project. And then in 2018, and I'll go into this a little more, we restarted the project using a public-private partnership model. In 2018, we went through this process of establishing objectives and key elements, and released a request for qualifications and proposals for a public-private partnership, and in September of that same year, the City Council selected Orton Development, or ODI, to be our partner in the project. That project was entitled by the Planning Commission in August of 2020, and it included co-working space, artist studios, a cafe, and flexible gallery performing arts space. In September, we executed what's called, we call an LDDA, or a Least Disposition Development Agreement, that laid out how the project was going to proceed, and this is a rendering of what the entitled project looked like at that point in time. In 2020, ODI requested to revise the plans, and the stated reasons for this were due to COVID-19 impacts and continued cost escalation of construction. In June, the Planning Commission considered but denied an application for the revision of those plans, and in October, the City Council reviewed that decision and affirmed the Planning Commission's denial, with the result that in 2022, the LDDA was terminated, and the reasons it was terminated was because there was a clause in that agreement that required the, the costs of the project to be less than $12.9 million unless additional grant funding was obtained at that point in time. With any condition being impossible to meet, it was subject to a no-fault termination, and that LDDA was terminated in October of last year. Despite all of this, and I think as indicated by the long history of this project, it has enjoyed continued strong community support, and has a lot of policy support in various documents from the general plan to the Park Avenue District Plan, and even most recently as part of the City Council's establishment of its goals for, for this calendar year. I said, I wanted to touch on the objectives and key elements, the objectives are, you know, the overarching things that we're trying to accomplish in terms of implementing the project, and again, these were established in 2018, and I just want to review them here now, the key elements which come later are what the project actually is. So, the objectives established in 18 were to first minimize city subsidy while ensuring fiscal sustainability of operations. This is still a relevant goal, as the city has adopted a operating budget for fiscal '24 and '25 that has operating deficits in it, and those are being filled by ending fund balances, but that's not a sustainable way to continue running the city, and so we have to be mindful of ongoing recurring costs particularly. We had an objective to maximize the civic and community arts-based uses of the plan, this is in some kind of tension with the subsidy objective, because obviously civic uses generally aren't revenue-producing, at least to the degree that might be required to completely eliminate the subsidy. The community's reception of the 2020 revised plan, in part, spoke to this goal, this, the continued importance of this goal, because the muted reception from the public was one of the reasons for the Planning Commission and the City Council's denial of that revision, and that a lot of the comments voiced around that plan related to the balance of arts-based uses and commercial uses. Expediting completion of the project continues to be an important goal, because costs continue to increase always, they only go one direction, and as you can see here, there's continued strong community support for the project, and then finally, use robust community engagement in developing the programming for the facility. One of the other contributing factors to the muted support for the 2020 revised plan was the fact that there was no established operator at that time, that was something that was to be created as a new entity by the developer to run and program the facility. As far as key elements are concerned, the, in 2018, dedicated space for celebration of the arts was a key element, as you all know, citing that and available space every year is a continued challenge. Dedicated and managed gallery space, there are more gallery spaces today than there were in 2017 and 2018, but we continue to support as a city of art innovation, that places for people to display, consume, and profit from their artworks is important. And then finally, dedicated flexible space for performing arts and other events, we've reformed our cabaret ordinance with the result that there's more performing arts here than there was in 2018 as well, or at least it's easier for private businesses to do this, but there still remain no dedicated space for performing arts uses in the City of Emeryville. As part of the City Council's request in April for the study session, it was requested that we look into the establishment of a municipal library as part of the project. Currently, we, there is no Emeryville library, and library services are provided to the citizens of Emeryville through the Oakland Public Library System, the, that is done through a grant of $120,000 a year by the city to the city of Oakland, and a little over 5,400 Emeryville residents are holders of Oakland Public Library cards as of 2019. We looked into this notion of a library in, in 2019, and engaged with the county library system, which gave us a price indicated in the staff report of approximately $900,000 a year for 20-hour-a-week operation at the ECL. The Golden Gate Branch Library itself, operations are approximately $670,000 a year, both of these are in $2019, and so staff's conclusion here is that there are significant startup costs, but more significantly, operating costs, staffing costs associated with a public library. Therefore, inclusion of a library is a key element into this project, would require some relaxing or modifying of the overall project objectives and elements, obviously the library would be, need to be added as a key element, but importantly, the idea of minimizing the city's operating subsidy would need to be revisited, because there are significant operational costs associated with the library, and then expediting completion is another thing that would be reconsidered, while you can still expedite it, it does add complexity to the, to the project in the sense of adding an additional use and finding the funds to support it. Onto implementation options, this is a challenging project, as evidenced by its long history and the fact that it's still not done. The operating costs are a significant challenge, they still are unbudgeted, and there's still not an identified revenue source for them. The capital funding is there, but it is limited, it's, it's 11 million, and as I mentioned, costs continue to increase to, to build a facility, and then finally, the identification of the operators I mentioned earlier has been a challenge. What we tried to do in 2018 was use a public-private partnership, but through a turnkey approach, it was to design, build, operate, maintain, the whole nine yards, all in one agreement, and the idea was that commercial uses would be introduced that would help support the operating revenue, that developer equity would augment the capital funds that we have, and it provided that you could either find an existing nonprofit operator, partner, or create one, and as I mentioned, they sought to create one newly for the project. All of these contributed, in my view, to the, the lack of success in delivering the project, because market dynamics changed quickly, obviously COVID was a factor, and the project is expensive, and the, the costs continue to, to escalate. Finally, identifying an existing operator on that kind of timeframe to negotiate, select a developer, negotiate, entitled, design, it's very difficult for a nonprofit arts organization to plan along those kinds of timeframe for a 30,000 square foot building. So, the implementation options that we reviewed in 2018 are still available to us, we could establish a new arts organization to develop this project, this does require some active leadership and a champion that's external to the city to lead that organization, we could identify an existing nonprofit organization to develop and, and operate this, as I mentioned, that's difficult to, to do, because of the timeframes involved, the city could operate it, but this contravenes certain policy statements, including the Public Art Master Plan, and creates additional complications, and as I mentioned many times, the city has limited fiscal capacity to, to do so, and then finally, the public-private partnership didn't work in the turnkey model, at least the last time it was attempted, but that is still available to us as well. Staff's recommending a hybrid approach, that combines the idea of finding an outside operator to run this, and the city operation models. Under staff's, the hybrid approach that suggested, staff, the city, would evaluate the feasibility as a first step, what can we get for the capital funds we have, approximately $11 million, and what is the minimum viable project that can be bought with those funds, meaning, what, what building that is occupiable, that delivers at least on the objective to house the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts annual exhibition, can that be accomplished and built? The city then would prosecute that as a normal capital project, with, you know, design, bid, and build, with a general contractor, and then, while that's underway, or when it's near completion, then solicit for operator interest from various nonprofit arts organizations. The city, in the meantime, if it didn't find an operator, would operate it like a community event space, similar to the way it operates the senior center in the ECL. Now, there are benefits and drawbacks to this approach, one, you know, the benefits are fairly obvious, it gives us a usable space to actually put out to the market, it does, it would, as a minimum viable project, it would minimize the capital costs that are put in to the project, it could deliver on the key element of giving a home for the celebration of the arts, and it opens up the ability for additional nonprofit operators once it's near completion to participate in operating it. The downsides are that we don't know if $11 million can deliver a viable project, even a minimal viable project, so that's the first kind of gating issue that we need to address. The other risks are that perhaps the minimum viable project's delivered, but we can't find somebody to operate it then either, and in that scenario, the city would incur operating costs of some sort, even if it were just to hold the building, to maintain it until a partner is found. The city could find partners, but not find any that can fully deal with the maintenance and the holding costs of the building, and that would also create a risk to the city in the future, and then finally, build a minimal viable project, but perhaps you have to undo some of that work, because now the, the partner that you did identify needs changes to the building, and certainly in the form of tenant improvements at a minimum, and, and there would be a capital cost associated with that that would need to be figured out and filled. Despite all that, staff is recommending the hybrid approach for, for proceeding with the, with this project. I'm gonna close with this slide, which is the discussion questions for you all, which are also in the staff report, we're looking basically to confirm, does the City Council still have the same project objectives of minimizing subsidy, maximizing community use, expediting the completion, and using robust community engagement to identify the programming, and also, does the City Council wish to modify the key elements that were established in 2018, do we want to add a library, is there still continued interest in space for the celebration of the arts, gallery space, and flexible space for, for performing arts? We'd like to know if all of those things are confirmed, does the City Council support the hybrid implementation approach, or have other ideas about that, and of course, open-ended, are there any other comments or, or direction to staff on this? And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, before we take questions and comments from the council, we will hear from the public, so, members of the public who wish to provide comment on the study session item have two minutes to do so, if you're joining us online, you can use the raise hand feature, if you're joining us in person, if you'd like to just line up behind Mr. Tahada Flores, and we'll give you your two minutes. The, the request I have for speakers is to, you don't need to use the whole two minutes, if you have somebody ahead of you in line who's given a comment that you'd like to just add on to or reflect, but we'll try to move through the comments so that we can get to the discussion and hopefully come out of this meeting with direction tonight. So, Mr. Tahada Flores, if you'd like to come to the microphone for us.
The document published for the meeting indicates three-minute limits, is that not correct? The, that's the standard language in, in the announcements of meetings?
Uh, we've been two minutes all year, I'm pretty sure, so I'm gonna check.
For those of us who've prepared three minutes.
Does say three minutes on this agenda, so it's three minutes.
No, thank you.
Yep.
Good evening.
This means we may not get to discussion until much later, but.
My name is Rick Tahada Flores, I'm speaking to you as a 26-year-old Emeryville resident, a documentary filmmaker, and a member of the Public Art Committee, I'm speaking for myself and not for the PAC. I've worked for NBC as a unit manager, the person responsible for monitoring and controlling show budgets. My connections with cultural organizations have included directing a national public television station organization, serving as general manager of KALW Radio, and the boards of Intersection for the Arts, a dramatic and producing organization, the Film Arts Foundation, the premier organization for independent filmmakers in California, and Western Public Radio, which trained radio documentary producers. All of these experiences have given me a thorough understanding of the issues that face arts organizations, their funding, operations, and how they serve their constituents. I'd like to make two important points tonight. City staff deals with many important issues, so it isn't surprising that no one on the staff has expertise in this area. What is needed is constant ongoing consultation with people who have planned and operated successful arts organizations, as well as those who have funded them, they need to be involved from the very beginning of this process, that means in crafting the RFP, in selecting applicants, and in designing the nonprofit to run the arts center. Almost all of those who fall into this category are already engaged full-time in this work, and couldn't devote much time to this form of support, but I'm sure that a small group could be put together to meet with city staff regularly, I and other supporters will be glad to provide you a list of possible participants in this process. Finally, I want to make sure you understand that no arts center that serves a large audience is or can be self-supporting. An arts center is a public service, and as such, it needs some support from civic and governmental bodies. In all businesses, there's what's called a break-even point, no startup hits that mark immediately, unless they're funded by wealthy venture capitalists. Arts centers are no different, they need time to grow, build audiences, and establish a track record. The most successful art center in the Bay Area is the Richmond Arts Center, which has been operating for over 70 years, it generates income from classes, grants, events, and contributions, it has always received support from the city of Richmond, until recently $150,000 a year. When most of that funding was withdrawn, the organization faced a financial crisis. If Emeryville wants the Center for the Arts to succeed, the city must support it financially. I'd be very happy to, to meet with staff and council members to explore these ideas more fully. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, welcome next speaker.
Thank you, Rick, I don't really have a, a prepared presentation this evening, Sharon Wilshire, I'm the coordinator for Emeryville Celebration of the Arts, but I did, as I was coming to the council meeting tonight, I thought, you know, I think I'm just gonna stop outside and see when the administrative building was completed, that was 2001. At that time, I was actually, prior to that, maybe two or three years prior to that, was on a committee for the city to look for, first of all, recommend an architect for that building, and also look for a location, this wasn't necessarily going to be where the administrative building would be placed, but we held community meetings all across the city, out at Watergate, Pacific Park Plaza, in the Triangle, in other areas, and at all of those meetings, because I was, I was on that committee, I wanted to know what the, what the community was thinking about for this new administration center, and sitting in the back of the room, I don't even think most people even knew who I was, one thing that came up at all of those meetings was an arts center, and so, at that point, I did some numbers tonight, thinking that the Celebration of the Arts would have been about in its 10th or 11th year then, it was our city's biggest cultural event, it remains that, and I wanted to just put out a word for all the work that was done for that nonprofit that was mentioned, in terms of consultants that were hired, focus groups, subcommittees, committees, finally, the, the formation of a nonprofit, and I really would hope in terms of some of the programming, I know that things change, but I think it's something to be reviewed again in terms of what their goal, what our goals were, and the mission for the arts center. We actually had settled on art and innovation before that was anything that the city ever used as their tagline, but just in terms of what our community is, I believe that, that mission responded to the Emeryville community, as well as understanding that we needed to appeal to a broader region than just, than just Emeryville to try and, and be able to support in some way. than just, than just Emeryville to try and, and be able to support in some way. And this goes way beyond, as, as did, all the plans have gone way beyond the art exhibition. You know, I think that we have such a healthy arts community here, and we'd love, yes, of course, we'd love a permanent home. It's, last year, we actually had 3,000 visitors at the art exhibition, so we continue to be the biggest cultural and actually community event in the city. But this is much beyond that, and anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, next speaker.
Good evening, mayor and council members. It's an honor to speak before you. My name is Archana Barbara Horsting. I've lived in Emeryville since 1979 in the Artist Co-op, and I've waited for the art center to be built for, since at least 2008. I've contributed whatever I could to focus groups, interviews, tours of my own arts organization, to try and share what I've learned. I've been the executive director of a nonprofit art, art center called Cala Art Institute in Berkeley for approximately 50 years. I wanted to share our revenue formula, which has kept us going for half a century. And it's basically a simple formula, 50/50, contributed income and earned. So, contributed means individuals, for example, that might give something, or foundations, or even government grants. And none of it comes from one source. You have to develop many, many sources. There are a lot of granting agencies out there, but you need somebody who knows how they work, who the players are, and what, what is, what is fair to ask. And you need a track record also, it helps. The other half would come from earned income. And believe it or not, even though we provide all kinds of community services, this is in Berkeley, but near, very near here, you know, less than a mile and a half, I'd say, it, we provide half of our income from earned income. And that is, again, I think Rick mentioned it, there are classes we have for adults, all kinds of youth art programs. We send artists into the schools. In fact, the city sponsors our work with the Emeryville Schools. And what, we get it matched by other members of the community. So, there are also ticketed events, an art auction we put on once a year. We also have facilities used that artists will pay for. We can also give all kinds of tuition help, and sliding scales, whatever, to make it possible that everybody, nobody's turned away. We also sell artwork on occasion, just like the Celebration of the Arts will occasionally sell something. All of these things add up, but you have to have kind of a big plan, and you have to kind of know what your formula is going to be. So I agree with Rick that we need a few professional advisors that can help plan the, plan this. There's, it's really, oh, is it three minutes?
Yes, thank you for your time.
Thanks very much.
Good evening, next speaker.
Hi, I'm Gloria Tanchalev. I've lived in Emeryville for 18 years. I'm a lifelong working artist, and I also have worked at the Museum of Modern Art New York and the San Francisco Art Institute. And when I was there, with the help of others, we reorganized the institute. We took the jump. We disbanded an organization that had been running the school and started something else. So, what you have to really do is think about what the art center is going to bring to the city, instead of being nervous about what you might get stuck with. And art will bring a great deal. It's a way of bringing people together in a safe space, where very difficult issues can sometimes be brought up, which art does, and then talked about. And if it's combined with music, dance, and the spoken word, that expands it. I also want to just say that part of the problem with the art center planning in the past has been trying to throw onto the shoulders of this difficult thing extraneous issues, co-working spaces, artist studios, artist housing, now a library. I strongly advise against a library. Not that a library is bad, just that a library doesn't belong in an art center and will add more things to deal with, when you've spent 20 years just trying to build this center. I think Rick's suggestion, there are a lot of people in Emeryville who could be very helpful. Archana Horsting has run an art center for 50 years, and as she said, there are a lot of ways to raise money. She didn't mention auctions, which Cala very successfully runs every year, or artist memberships. There are a lot of ways to raise money, and if you start getting nervous about it, you won't do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening, next speaker.
My name is Scott Donahue. Thank you, council, for considering this. The building right behind you, I think, is not an asset as it is right now. I think that if we start from scratch, tear it down, we won't have all of these expensive limitations, like the ceilings are too low for most theatrical performances, the ceilings are too low for most art spaces. If we start from scratch, we could have a pole building, a pole barn. You see these all over the American West and Midwest. They're rural buildings that house big things. We could have the ceilings high enough. We could have a huge space for, well within our budget, because these buildings are not intended to be anything but temporary. But they do last, if they're built well, 60 years. We could build this building within six months, and it would be pre-made elsewhere, mostly in the Midwest, they build them, ship it here and assemble it in a couple of months. Then we have a property that has some immediate value for us, but more importantly, it's a property that could be redeveloped by higher uses in the future, and it would be a start. And the art center, I believe, by existing for real, would then generate additional interest for that piece of property. It's not a coincidence that the Museum of Modern Art in New York has profited by air rights over it. You know, that developed later. They just got a start, a small start, and they expanded, and then finally, the location became valuable and more valuable. And I think that, that approach, a kind of hybrid approach you could call this, would serve us well, and would be easy to pivot from to something better in the future, but it would be something great to have right away. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening, next speaker.
My name is Vicky Josul. My husband and I bought our first house here in 1980, and we built our art studio with the help of the planning department, which only had one person in it. His name was Mr. Burke, and he helped us design our plant property and come out and help us build it. Did help us a lot with the plumbing. But I'm on, we also have a community garden built on a burned-down gas station called Big Daddy's. I'm on the housing committee, and I'm on the, well, I just, I spent many years on the housing committee, I'm on the art committee, and some of you know that I'm on the board for ECAP. And that's what I want to talk about. I want to knock down the building and make housing, affordable housing there, have the state of California and a developer like RCD build affordable housing there, and make the art center the anchor tenant. I want to take the $12 million and make the best art center you ever saw with the art center. I want us to own the bottom of it and not pay rent. And you can, I wouldn't mind if you put senior artist ladies in affordable housing, but you can, you can have senior art guys. You could have children, or families, whatever you like, but put that housing there and have the state build that building, because we don't, $12 million isn't going to build that building. And there's nothing really intrinsically great about that brick building, except that it's earthquake unsafe. It's not really beautiful, it's not great for an art center. It was meant to be a metal stamping plant, so knock it down. Let's have another affordable housing building and a giant art center, and take the rest of that money and use it that way. Talk to Archana, Archana about how to structure an organization. We can have staff, there'll be, you know, an assistant and a director. Once you have a calendar of events, you can rent it out, you can have classes, you can have, people will donate money. Believe me, they will donate money. People will become members. You can raise money for art centers in the Bay Area. People love art. Have music, have dances, have lectures, have films. We can have a big program. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening.
Good evening. It's for short people. Hi, I'm Jean Goldman, resident, longtime resident of Emeryville, former member of the Public Art Committee and of the Celebration of the Arts Board. I'm here to talk about, I agree with Chad about the hybrid version. The only thing I would say is you need to bring on the arts organization at the same time as you're developing the building. Don't wait until the building is developed, and then you may have to make changes. They need to be brought together as a team going forward. So that's the only thing I would want to say, that, don't leave that out. Bring that nonprofit arts organization group together right away as you start the, the planning. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I would like to speak for Nancy Karp this evening. She's out of the country and asked if I could just read this, please.
I'm going to ask that the city clerk do that.
May I?
I'm going to ask the city clerk read it. You can give it to the city clerk.
Okay, sure.
Are there other live speakers who would like to speak before we hear the written, the written comment?
I'd love to speak.
I'll let the live speakers go first. Can I hold on to this? I'll get back to you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Littleton Steven Erby, and I live in Emeryville also. I've lived here since 2007, and I guess that's relatively new compared to other artists. I'm just sitting back and I'm just watching and seeing how wonderful it is to have such a diverse group of people, where I can feel comfortable and not have to worry about anything, and how art is, is very important in our lives. And the thing that I was thinking about is, I understand about the center, but what are we going to do now? What are we waiting for with now? So what I wanted to suggest is, there's a company that I'm aware of, that actually wants, is looking for a location in Emeryville, it's a small, a startup company, and they want to have just simply a gallery, they want to have artist loft, and it sounds kind of cool, and it, it's at the same time as everything else is. So, I just thought it was great to see that, you know, we have support now for the art center, but as it takes, as time goes on, people just become disinterested, and it's not as strong. And something as, as wonderful as that, I think, needs to take priority, so I think we need to find a way where we can have at least some of the basics, or some things that maybe could even partner with them, and, and find a way that we can just have, like, residents or something, get support, and, and still flourish. I mean, it's, it's, it's great. It's a wonderful city and everything else, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who are present who would like to give comment on this item? Okay, we have no hands raised online. Madam Clerk, do you have written comments you'd like to read?
Yes, mayor, one.
Okay, go ahead.
If, if, I'd like to keep the discussion going for there to be real performance space at the Emeryville Art Center. This basically means a sprung floor for dance, theater, and music performances, with minimum dimensions for the performance area to be 30 by 45 feet, a lighting grid to accommodate professional productions, a separate bathroom for performers for privacy from the public, a small green room would also be very useful, and can serve other purposes such as a meeting room for other functions. A professional lighting and sound system for performances and other events would also be a requirement. Having these essential accommodations would allow the art center to run out the space to professional performing groups, dance, theater, music, and would definitely add to earned income for the center. Having anything less than what I mentioned would make the space less desirable to these groups that normally pay going, pay going Bay Area nonprofit theater rental rates. Having knowledge of the performing arts field for over four decades, I know that the flexible use space without these features would not attract groups to rent the art center space, hence a loss for generating potential earned income. And this is from Nancy Karp.
Thank you. We have a hand raised. Could you please recognize Steve Bronson for two, or three minutes, please? Good evening, speaker, if you'd like to unmute.
Yes, I think any part of a study center session should include looking at surrounding art centers that have been flourishing for decades. See how they, they do it, see how they do it every year. I think it's, it's really important for us, study session, to look at these other art centers, the Berkeley Art Center, Richmond Art Center, Palo Alto Art Center, and so forth. I think we have a lot to learn from what they, they've established through our service, and how, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to comment on item 6.1? Public comment is now closed, and I'll ask if, Chad, if you could put up the questions? Or do, do you have a slide with that, or no? Okay.
If I can do it.
So, members, I'll open it for discussion. These are the questions, they're also listed in the staff report, that we'll go over this evening to give staff guidance and direction, if appropriate. And I'll begin by inviting council members who have comments or questions that they'd like to share their input on. I'll start with Member Mora.
I just wanted to start by appreciating the long tortured path and history of the art center, and also getting filled in on that history by many of the passionate commenters this evening. It's been years, if not decades, and I think one thing that's become crystal clear to me, as a newer council member, is the need for clear direction. I think it's a trap to turn this into a grab bag of wishes and desires for the city. I think that's, that's the way to sink the project, or ensure some, you know, an additional 10 or 20 years of planning. I, I think the fastest and clean, clearest path to success is to get it built, to take the hybrid approach, where it gets built, we make the best art center that we can, likely tearing it down and, you know, trying to make it minimally, you know, get all the functionality. We don't want a compromised building in any, any way, so, you know, find out what we can get for those millions of dollars. But definitely, you know, get some, get some shovels in the ground and, and get started. I think that, that should be a clear priority for this council, and not to get distracted by adding other elements, including a library, unfortunately. I would love to see a library in the city of Emeryville. I take my kids to the Berkeley and Oakland libraries, and the, this, the county, Alameda County Library, but unfortunately, I'll have to table that desire for, for another time. I don't think this project is the right place for that.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Yes, I just want to thank the community for their ongoing support over the last, what is the math on 2006 to today? 17 years, so the people who were born when this project was first going to get developed and started are going into their senior year of high school in the fall. I just want to echo Member Mora's sentiments about expediting this project. It has, in, in my personal opinion, gone on just a little bit too long, and it's something that will add great benefit to our community, and also agreeing with changing the project objectives and trying to potentially add a library and a... And again, I love libraries, I have young children, we go to the libraries, but libraries now have such a different aspect of programming. It's, a lot of it is like workforce development, a lot of community programming that is, would add just another layer of complexity to a project that has already been very complex. And I don't feel that this is the right project to try to merge a library. So just wanting to point that out as well. But I agree that the hybrid model feels like the best path forward. There are a lot of opportunities as far as the earned income that we have both heard from staff and the community that I feel are wonderful opportunities. And I, I'm hoping that we can all come to a consensus this evening and get this project back on track. Thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
Thank you to all of the community members here today who have expressed their passionate interest for the art center, which is something that I think all council members support. Of course, we have different visions about it. So I'm going to briefly talk about, one of the things I do support about the library as part of this art center is to, to some of the community members here who raised the point about funding. Libraries have been known to get consistent fundings every single year and, and they are actually a part of literary arts. So if we are considering an art center and a cultural center, I think that should embrace even the literal arts. I do not believe that it's going to be an exhausting thing to add it. I just feel that it should be considered at some point, if not at the initiation of the project. It can definitely be a hybrid project. I do like the idea that was proposed of it being a really great art center, one of the best in the area. I would love for it to be a center of art and innovation where it is a net zero building with no energy, that would have, you know, a lot of funding available directly from the start and inception. But it can be built in elements, I think, and that I would be supportive of a hybrid approach. Of course, I think community engagement is very, very important and I think that the input from the community should be considered for every one of these elements, including whether or not to add a library or not and whatever the community determines, and they have waited for so long, I think that it should be definitely considered.
Member Pryforce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a bottom line and I have a top line. The bottom line is that the art center needs to be built. The top line is that the art center needs to be built now. That is how I feel. That it's taken too long and this has become the impossible project. And I love impossible projects. When, when I first came here to the Bay Area from, from Brooklyn, New York, I was deeply involved in the tech industry as a tech startup founder. And one thing that I saw consistently was that even though Silicon Valley wasn't that far away, if you walked into Oakland schools, it seemed like it was on the other side of the moon, right? None of the kids were being prepared to actually work at some of the big tech companies or even start new tech companies. And so, you know, a group of friends and I, after they kept hearing me talk about kids and kids and kids, what about the kids? I did a blog called Startup America Should Look Like America. And it talked about kids, like what it was like going into Oakland classrooms and knowing that this, this, this gap existed. So, we got together and we decided to create a nonprofit called the Hennigan Genius Project. And the Hennigan Genius Project was focused on, on African-American boys in Oakland and teaching them programming languages. And we made it like a fellowship. It was like a two-year, two, three-year fellowship. We interviewed boys, we, you know, their parents were really excited and, and we launched our first cohort. In order for Hennigan Genius to exist, a community bank gave us a top floor that they weren't using, that they were actually thinking about moving. Free, free rent. We had free rent for, I believe, maybe about three years. And then, when they finally moved out of the building, a developer decided that they had some free space in the office building and they gave us very, very low cost rent. And then we stayed there for about maybe six, seven years. Hennigan Genius Project, last year, just purchased its first building in downtown Oakland. Can you imagine that? And knowing that, but we also are opening the building to other nonprofits. So we're giving back. And I feel like that is an Oakland story. And I feel like that's a Berkeley story. Why isn't that our story? Why isn't that an Emeryville story? And unfortunately, Emeryville doesn't have a great history when it comes to supporting nonprofit organizations. We barely know some of the nonprofit organizations that exist. And, you know, I've seen it in my interactions with, with Ecap, I've seen it in my interactions with PACT, I've seen in my interactions with several nonprofits where they want more from their city. And so, a model that, that Chad was suggesting that allows for the city to have an upfront support. And then we, as Jean suggested, we start hammering out a nonprofit organization that can bring in some of those sort of revenue, revenue generating grants and, and donations. That's my world. And looking at what happened with Hennigan Genius Project and other organizations that I've been a part of, it can happen. So for those who have doubts about this happening, it can happen if we all work together as the village that I believe that we are. Part of it being able to happen is lifting barriers. And now y'all know me enough to know that I'm all about lifting barriers. Lifting barriers to opportunity for people, not lifting barriers for corporate developers, lobbyists, and, you know, their evangelists. The library is a barrier. And I believe that, I, we had this conversation in our community services committee and Councilmember Welch and I, we were asking our assistant city manager questions around that. And then when we were looking at the numbers, both of us kind of just went, yeah, that, that's hard. So you have the money aspects, right? That can become a barrier, but the, in terms of budget, but you also have the logistical. And I went over to Golden Gate Branch and I asked them about this. And I said, okay, how does this all work, right? Just like break it down to me. And they broke it down to me. And just even getting books in and out, now that's just books. But is, I agree with Councilmember Welch that the library is all of these different, and then the hours and then all of the, the requirements that because it's a, is a public facility, that it has to align with other public, it's just a lot to be, to burden this art center with. And so, I am for this art center and, and I, and I, you know, I wrote down many of your, this, this is a lot, and a lot of people have a lot of ideas. But I believe that if we all work together, if we all stand together as a village, we can make this happen and Emeryville will be the better for it. Those are my comments.
So when I look at the discussion questions, I want to first open by thanking all the members of the artist community who've persevered through redevelopment and the loss of that, which was the original funding plan for this project. And then it was shelved for a long time because there was just no predictable way in which this project could be completed. And, you know, I'm the only council member who remains from the last effort in 2017 requesting an item and putting together a blue ribbon panel of folks to engage in what Chad presented on a public-private partnership to build something that would reflect the community's key elements and goals. And we did a lot of community engagement in that process about what people wanted to see and the project objectives that are on the screen in front of us here. And, you know, I, I don't know, it's, sometimes you have to believe that things like COVID that I think took a lot of the plans for the art center way off course with challenges to the economy and some of the revenue generating plans that were anticipated by the private partner. It was a very frustrating experience to work on something for that long, knowing that other people here have worked on it much longer. To work close to something for that long and not have it come to fruition and to be back, you know, at the proverbial square one. But we're here tonight because we, we are committed to this. This is, this is a community cultural asset. I think everybody who spoke this evening spoke to that and it has a value. And so in terms of the project objectives, I, I believe that the project objectives remain the same, that they remain the same and that we, we need to find a way to expedite completion, maximize the art-based uses and provide a flexible space for us to have a truly diverse cultural art experience in our community. When it comes to the key elements, I, I don't support a library. I won't go into too much detail other than to say that Chad has a slide that presented the costs that we pay to participate in a fully functioning library system. We have a contract with the city of Oakland and the cost of operating a library here would not just be on a magnitude of three to five times more than what we pay now, but would also just add complications to the project objectives, including expediting completion and maximizing art-based spaces. As soon as, I, I agree that literary arts are important and I do value them, but I, I think that the history of this project is really committed to a, a cultural art center. And, and so I'm not supportive of the library for both fiscal and objective reasons. It needs to be a space for the annual celebration of the arts. I think that the last two items there, although I, I've always been a huge, a former member of performing arts, think that that needs to remain flexible. But I, I agree with some of the commenters that the objectives may have changed, the key elements needs may have changed. The community should revisit this. Nothing is ever static and we haven't built it yet, so why would we tie ourselves to what some prior iteration of uses or design would be? I fully support tearing down the building behind us. I think that was one of, I, I can say, you know, as the member in the negotiations, you know, former council member Donahue was my counterpart in negotiating with the developer the last time around. But one of the big barriers, as I think, and I appreciate your comment, was the need, there was this desire to maintain the structure and I believe that contributed to costs. And it created other design issues that I think ultimately contribute to delay in the project. And while the structure is actually listed in the Emeryville Register as a significant structure, I don't believe that anyone today here would have a problem with us taking the structure down to give ourselves a clean canvas to work from and finding ways to preserve elements of the building instead, like bricks or things to use for a facade or something that we can incorporate kind of the history of the neighborhood instead. So, I, I support the hybrid model as well. I believe that we should reengage the community on two fronts. One is to revisit the key elements, to hear from the current members of the artist community and their partners about what elements we'd like to see. But I also believe that we do need to create an informed task force of people who are professional artists and who work in the field of, you know, performing arts, art museums, creative and cultural art spaces, that we need to convene that group about both the process and I think better inform the council on how to bring nonprofit partners for operations in early, how to bring viable ways to fund, diversify the ways in which we can fund operations long-term. I think that those are things that we need to do out of the gate because what I'm hearing tonight is not a desire to prop up a building that is hollow at its core and could be built out as if it was a restaurant with a tenant improvement, but something that from its initial design is going to have as a footprint at least, a usable space that will be inclusive of everything that the art community here wants. So those are my comments. I'll, I'll go back to the questions now for the purposes of giving direction support. I took a note that all members support the hybrid implementation approach. Is there any member who wishes to change their mind on that? Okay, so staff, that's direction. Is there any member who wishes to modify any of the project objectives that are listed here? Okay, so project objectives remain the same. In terms of modifying key elements, I took notes that we had one member supportive of a library and four members not supportive of that as an additional key element. Is there anyone who wishes to change their opinion on that or give further comment on that? Member Pryforce.
I just want to say that if it's councilmembers Carr's wish that we eventually have a library, then I believe that that can be revisited in the future. And I would be supportive of that if we can find a way. And if we're going to do it, we, we go big. But I don't believe that this is the appropriate project for this.
Okay, so there's majority support not to include a library as a key element. We've heard the other comments from members in terms of my proposal, which would be to ask the staff to develop a plan, working with the Public Art Committee, for both bringing back Public Art Committee input on key elements and doing public engagement on that, but also about creating or identifying a core group of people who could advise before we, we took, you know, concrete action to give staff direction to move forward. Is there any staff feedback on that, Chad or Charlie, that you'd like to provide as to information that you would need or is that clear direction if the council was to get, that's clear for you?
I think that sounds fine.
Okay, is there council support for that recommendation?
Yes.
Yes? 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 Okay, so that's the direction. Is there any other comments that members have on this item tonight? Okay, so this was a study session. Staff has the direction it needs. Thank you again to the members of the public and the artist community for coming out. So, we will put this back on the agenda when staff have done their next round of engagement and diligence and we'll have it in the fall, so hopefully. Okay. That concludes item six point one. Madam Clerk, the time, seven thirty-two, the meeting is adjourned. Okay, we got a couple of quick meetings to run through here. Madam Clerk, the time is seven thirty-two. I call to order the management of Emeryville Services Authority. Please note that all members are still present. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final agenda.
I move approval of the final agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Welch, second by Mora to approve the agenda. Please call the roll. If you're here to have a conversation, please take it in the hall.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. The agenda has been approved. Are there any ex parte communications for the Mesa Board? Seeing and hearing none. Public comment for items not on the agenda? Is there a member of the public who wishes to comment for an item not on the agenda for the Mesa Board meeting? Do we receive any written comments?
No, Mayor.
Public comment is closed. Action items, we have one action item. It's a resolution of the Board of Mesa, removing the police lieutenant, police captain, and police chief job classifications from representation in the confidential administrative managerial and provincial employees, employee organization. I'm going to ask that with unanimous consent, we waive presentation. Is there any member who needs presentation on this? Okay, seeing none. Is there any public comment for item six point one? Do we receive any written comments?
No, Mayor.
Public comment is closed. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Welch, second by Mora to approve item six point one. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. Madam Clerk, the time is seven thirty-four. The meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is seven thirty-four. I call to order the city of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
I move approval of the final agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Welch, second by Mora to approve agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. The agenda has been approved. Public comment for items not on the agenda or the consent calendar for the redevelopment agency meeting? Is there any written comments for this meeting?
No, Mayor.
Public comment is closed. Members, before your items six point one and six point two for consent, is there any member who wishes to pull an item or discuss it further? Seeing and hearing none is the motion.
Aye, yeah. Out of the consent calendar?
For the redevelopment, redevelopment agency?
Uh, no.
Okay, is there a motion on this item?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Carr, second by Welch to approve 6.1 and 6.2. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:35. That meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:35. I call to order this regular city council meeting for the City of Emeryville on today, Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that all members are still present from the prior meetings. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to pull the final agenda, approve the agenda, but I'm going to actually make the motion. I'd like to pull item 10.8 from consent, because I will have a conflict. I own property that is, is it 10.8? Yes, I own property that is within 1,000 feet of the subject property for that item, and I'll be recusing myself this evening. Is there any other item that members wish to discuss on consent?
Uh, yes, I'd like to discuss 10.9. And I also have a, a question on procedure. Usually when we have a, sort of an address conflict, like when we own property or we have a, a, a long-term lease, usually council members are asked to provide their address?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, okay, yeah, because that was confusing. Okay, thank you.
I'll do it when I'm supposed to. Okay, 10.9, do you have, would you like to just discuss and ask questions when we get to that? Is that what you're asking for?
Oh, yeah, 10.9 to pull it off, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve the final agenda by pulling 10.8 and 10.9 from the consent calendar.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Welch and a second by Mora to approve the agenda as amended. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye, thank you. Okay, we have a special order of the day. Are you ready? Find your button.
Ready as I'll ever be.
I know. All right, well, for those who came this evening for business, I apologize, there was more important business, which is proclamation honoring Charles S. Bryant upon the occasion of his retirement from the City of Emeryville after more than 23 years of continuous and outstanding service to our city. So whereas in August of 2000, Charles, known as Charlie to us, Bryant, was hired by the City of Emeryville as the Planning and Building Director, and whereas prior to working for the City of Emeryville, Charlie received a bachelor's degree in architecture from the Massachusetts Institute of Technology while doing part-time employment as a taxi cab driver in Boston, I can only imagine, and later received a master's degree in city and regional planning at the University of California, Berkeley. And whereas Charlie also worked for the City of Oakland for 18 years, beginning as an intern while in graduate school, becoming Oakland's first environmental review coordinator, later overseeing long-range planning projects, including the general plan update, and serving five years as Planning Commission Secretary and Supervisor of Commission Cases. And whereas Charlie supervised the planning process for the North Hollis Urban Design Program adopted in 2001, which established the NH Zone Overlay District, the North Hollis Greenway, and the Doyle Hollis Park. And whereas Charlie supervised the committee planning process for the Park Avenue District Plan adopted in 2007, which resulted in the PA Zone Overlay District and the beautiful street improvements on Park Avenue west of Hollis. And whereas Charlie led the city's update of the general plan adopted in 2009, which called for a cohesive, distinctive, connected, green, walkable, bikeable, vibrant, urban, diverse, balanced, inclusive, sustainable, innovative, imaginable, and memorable city, with public features from the South Bayfront Bridge to a three-city boundary sign. And whereas Charlie led the city's efforts to update the bicycle and pedestrian master plan in 2012, which led to pedestrian and bicycle street crossings from San Pablo Avenue near 40th Street to the Greenway at 65th, 66th, and 67th Streets. And whereas on July 1st, 2014, Charlie became the Community Development Director when the city merged the Planning and Building Department with the Economic Development Department. And whereas Charlie supervised preparation of the 2020 40th Street Bus Hub Project Plan, which calls for a cycle track and improvements for bus riders and pedestrians. And whereas Charlie led the city's effort to update four of the city's housing elements, the most recent being adopted December 12th, 2022. And whereas several of Charlie's planning projects have won awards from the American Planning Association, bringing recognition and honor to both him and our city. And whereas Charlie oversaw the development of thousands of residential homes, including affordable homes, many of which included the implementation of the family-friendly housing standards and the cleanup of prior industrial sites. And whereas Charlie oversaw approval of over a million square feet of tech and office space, including projects on Wareham, Biomed, and Stanford Sites. And whereas Charlie built a good team of long-serving planning, building, economic development, and housing staffers, supported them, listened to them, and liked to call himself the conductor of the orchestra. And whereas Charlie served the city under the administration of six city managers, four public works directors, seven finance directors, four police chiefs, and four community services directors. And whereas Charlie's intimate knowledge of the development and redevelopment of the City of Emeryville would make a great history book for the community in itself. And whereas Charlie's brilliance, patience, and consistency have instilled a sense of well-being, confidence, and respect that will be generally greatly missed, I'm sorry. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Emeryville extends its sincere appreciation to Charles S. Bryant for his over 23 years of continuous and honorable service to the City of Emeryville and its residents. And it be further resolved that as Mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council and the people of the City of Emeryville, we extend our good wishes to Charles Bryant for the very best in his retirement and his future endeavors, proclaimed on this 18th day of July, 2023, by the Mayor of the City of Emeryville. Please join me in congratulating him.
Wow, somebody did their homework.
Well, it was some buddies. I would not personally have had all that information myself. Would you like to come to the podium and say some words?
I certainly would. You just said just about everything I was planning to say, but that won't stop me.
That's good.
Thank you, Mayor Bowers and members of the City Council. This is very touching and very much appreciated. You know, it's not every day that one gets to attend one's last city council meeting after a planning career that spans almost 50 years. So, if you will indulge me, I would like to take a few minutes to say a few words.
Please do.
Thank you. As I have previously said, it has been my great honor and privilege to have served the people of Emeryville as their planning director for, for the past 23 years, and I'd like to reflect back on a few things that stand out to me from my time with the city, most of which you just said, but I'll say them again. First and foremost is the Emeryville General Plan. The city manager who hired me, John Flores, swore that he would never undertake a general plan update. Well, I managed to persuade him, and in 2003, the City Council passed a resolution that I wrote directing staff to undertake an update of the general plan. This took about six years and culminated in the adoption of our current general plan in October 2009. It was a very robust process with a lot of citizen participation. We had a 16-member steering committee representing the various interest groups of the Emeryville community, and dozens of panel discussions, community workshops, study sessions, and public hearings. Ultimately, the steering committee unanimously voted to recommend adoption of the general plan, which of course was followed by a recommendation from the Planning Commission and adoption by the City Council. There's a lot I could say about the general plan, some of which you just said, but I'll spare you those details. Suffice it to say that the general plan has served us well for the past 14 years, but things have changed, and it's now time to update it again. In fact, the budget that you adopted on June 6th, you may not know this, but buried in that budget, is a goal to begin planning for the next general plan update. I hope that this upcoming process will be as successful as the one that resulted in the current general plan. And I want to highlight two other plans, which you also mentioned. The North Hollis Urban Design Plan, which resulted in the hugely successful Emeryville Greenway, and the Park Avenue District Plan, which produced the streetscape improvements along Park Avenue between Hollis Street and the railroad. This includes wide sidewalks and large, beautiful street trees, which are planted in good soil conditions so that they have thrived and are located where street trees should be located, between the roadway and the sidewalk. It includes ample pedestrian and bicycle amenities, including benches, bike racks, trash cans, and brick pavers, and this is a model of good streetscape design and should be emulated wherever we have the opportunity. I'd also like to mention a couple of development projects that stand out to me. First is the public market. Why the public market, you ask? The general plan includes a vision for the transformation of suburban shopping centers with acres of surface parking lots, like Powell Street Plaza and the East Bay Bridge, into vibrant, high-density urban neighborhoods by replacing the surface parking lots with structured parking, high-density housing, commercial development, and ample public open space. The public market is an example of how that can happen. With city streets that used to be private, private parking lot aisles, 479 units of new housing, 61 of which are below market rate, an expanded city park, and new public plazas where surface parking lots used to be. I hope that I live to see the day when Powell Street Plaza and East Bay Bridge are similarly transformed as envisioned by the general plan. The other project that I want to highlight is Sherwin-Williams, which is now called the Emory. I have worked on various iterations of this project for most of my time in Emeryville. It is now nearing completion. Just last week, I had the opportunity to walk along a new portion of the Greenway that is part of that project, and I must say it has turned out even better than I had expected. The project includes 500 units of new housing, 85 of which are below market rate, the completion of the Emeryville Greenway, a new city park, and the adaptive reuse of the former Sherwin-Williams office building into research and development lab space with an incredible pedestrian and bicycle pass-through connecting 45th Street and the new park. It also provides over $7 million worth of community benefits for the surrounding neighborhood, including utility undergrounding, new curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, an art gallery, and a shuttle to the West Oakland Bart Station, all of which resulted from our development bonus system. I hope that future projects will be as successful at providing much-needed housing, open space, and other enhancements for the community as this project has been. And speaking of housing, I'm proud that during my tenure as planning director, we have added over 3,500 units of new housing with another 1,400 currently in the development pipeline, which collectively represents more than a doubling of the housing stock since 2000. And I'm especially proud that almost 20% of those units are below market rate. While that is not nearly enough to address the affordable housing crisis that we find ourselves in, it is a much higher percentage than most other cities. Nonetheless, I am still hopeful that the number and percentage of affordable units can be increased in the future. Finally, the mayor mentioned our team in the Community Development Department. None of these things would have been possible, and me as the conductor, thank you for that, without the hard work of the incredible staff of the Community Development Department. So I'd like to take just another minute to acknowledge each and every one of them, including our stellar administrative assistant, Maggie Mahaffey, the newest member of the Planning Division, Assistant Planner, Alyssa Chung, long-term employee Navar Oaks, who was recently promoted to Senior Planner, another longtime staff member who was recently appointed as the manager of the Planning Division, Miru Desai. In the Building Division, our newest staff member, Code Enforcement Officer Nicole Ewing, our very hard-working building permit technician and plan checker, Courtney Barrett, our Chief Building Official, whose title now also includes Fire Code Official, Vic Gonzalez, and in the Economic Development and Housing Division, our Labor Standards Expert, Management Analyst, April Shabazz, our three Community and Economic Development Coordinators, who all, all have the same job title but who cover a variety of disciplines, ranging from affordable housing to public art to brownfield remediation, and they are Charles Harris, Amber Evans, and Valerie Bernardo. And finally, of course, our Deputy Director, Chad Smalley, who oversees the Economic Development and Housing Division. It always amazes me when I review the many accomplishments of our department that it has been done by such a small group of just a dozen people. They are extremely talented professionals who are dedicated to the Emeryville community. They will carry on the great work of this department without skipping a beat after I retire. You won't even know that I'm gone. With that, I wish you all the best.
Don't go anywhere, don't go anywhere. I would like to invite any member of Charlie's staff, it doesn't have to even be Charlie's department, who want to come take a photo with him. We have a framed one for you.
All staff who want to be up there are welcome.
Yeah.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you for all your years, sir.
My query imbalance, this would not pass planning.
We're pretty loose.
One, two, three.
Congratulations on your retirement.
Item five on the agenda is announcements of committee and commission vacancies.
I do not have a report this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Item six is announcements by council members of meetings they've attended for, on behalf of the city. Item seven is the city manager's report.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Item eight is ex parte communications. Are there any members who wish to report ex parte communications this evening? I will report a number of them. I have met with various representatives of the Granite Expo on item 12.1. I have received letters from folks from the Butner Properties on item 12.1. I've met with Bike East Bay on 12.1, the Alameda CTC on item 12.1. I have met with the Park Business Center HOA on 12.1, and I think a couple of residents on 12.1. Vice Mayor Welch.
I have received an email from the Butner Properties and also from a Emily Riggs from Katzoff &amp; Riggs LLP.
Member Pryforce.
I received communication from, I believe, Granite Expo and a consultant that they used.
Member Carr.
I have this, I, I think I was on the same email chain. That'd be all the way.
The same for you? Same email for member Mora. Okay. Item nine is public comment for consent agenda and items not on the agenda. A member of the public looking to talk on an item not on the agenda this evening has three minutes to do so. We do receive any written comments for non-agenda items or consent?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so public comment on non-agenda is closed. We're at the consent calendar. What I'd like to do is discuss item 10.9 first, and then we can take 10.9 with the others before I recuse myself on 10.8. So, council member Pryforce has questions or comments on 10.9.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, 10.9 has to do with, I believe, executing a new contract, or renewing a contract with Operation Dignity to provide homeless support services, and about, about 300K for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and another, yeah, for, for several years going into 2026, same, same amount. So, so prior to joining the, the City Council, when I would interact with the, the unhoused encampments around Emeryville, it was part of my just rotation doing neighborhood watch, and I would drop by and drop off things. And, and so Operation Dignity would come up a lot. And, because they would ask me, oh, so what do you do? And I, you know, told them I was in philanthropy. And, and so Operation Philanth- Operation Dignity would usually come up when they would say that they were supposed to receive services that they didn't receive. And I told them, well, I don't know, I've never heard of them. I don't know anything about it. I have some friends who are in the space. I can ask them some questions about that. And I did, and I asked them. And, and then Operation Dignity was, was, was described to me as a camp clearer, an encampment clearer. Like, that's what they do. That cities hire them to come in and make unhoused populations disappear. And then, and then from a nonprofit sort of management standpoint, they would say that the Operation Dignity, that most of their funding went to their overhead, more than 50%, which is usually like a red flag in the nonprofit space, especially from a philanthropic standpoint in terms of what we choose to fund. And that they, that- in terms of what we choose to fund, and that they, that by being the camp clearer, that they were really good at not being able to answer some questions. And so I did my research after a recent interaction, and I have to apologize to the person who, I don't recall their name, but I did record their audio statement, which was a recommendation that they wanted to do to Public Works, but they talked about their relationship. Now, there is a actual case, Reed versus City of Emeryville, that involves our relationship to some of our unhoused populations. In one of them, it states that plaintiffs assert that the only shelter option offered by the City of Emeryville, an overnight shelter at St. Vincent de Paul, is not suitable for persons with mental health disabilities. And so this was a case related to, I believe, it's before my time, I believe it was related to those who took issue with how they were cleared and their disabilities, and mental health disabilities or physical disabilities, and that they weren't provided support. And the gentleman who I spoke to also had some mental health disabilities and said that Operation Dignity was supposed to provide them funding and that sort of thing. And so this isn't like a hard thing for me to jump on them about, because I also understand that this may be just the organizational-cultural climate of a lot of orgs, and that there may not be a better org than Operation Dignity. But I would just suggest, because I know, because this has been spoken to me, then I would just suggest that we follow up with them to do sort of a post-contract or maybe a progress report audit of their services to ensure that, yes, this may be the, this may be the way things are done, but when it comes to the City of Emeryville, that we do want to follow up and make sure that they are doing a better job than they may be asked to do in other cities. And so that's my concern based upon my interactions with those that I've mentioned. So that's just what I wanted to share.
Okay. I'm going to call for public comment. This was pulled from consensus standalone item. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on 10.9? Do we receive any written comments for 10.9?
No, Mayor.
Comment is closed. Are there members, other members who wish to discuss? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion on 10.9.
Oh, I did have one discussion.
Okay, Member Mora.
So I just wanted to concur with part of what Councilmember Prideforce said. I do think it's important when we make a contract with a provider who has a certain expertise that the city lacks, that I think follow-up is important. So I've advocated for that in the past with affordable housing oversight, but I also think it's important for the city to get that expertise, contract with best, find who has the best practices, and somebody who can engage the unhoused population in setting them up with resources. So I would be prepared to support approving this and also providing instruction to staff just for appropriate follow-up, just to make sure the money is well-spent and that they are living up to their name.
And just for clarification, I believe the contract actually provides for that. Is that not correct, staff?
That is correct, and we will follow up with them.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Welch.
I was just going to note what you said, that if you review the resolution, it does say breaks down the homeless strategy, which requires assistance with homeless outreach, case management, administration of rapid rehousing services. So as far as encampment clearing and what have you, or any type of more aggressive actions against our unhoused residents, that is not something that is implemented by the city. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Have you made a motion?
So I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
I will second.
Thank you. Motion by Mora, second by Welch to approve item 10.9. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Prideforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. Okay, we'll take items 10.1 through 10.16, excluding 10.8 and 9. And, members, is there a motion on the consent calendar for those items?
I move approval of consent.
Second.
Okay, motion by Welch, second by Mora to approve 10.1 through 10.7, and 10.10 through 10.16. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Prideforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye, we're at item 10.8. Members, item 10.8, I own the real property situated at 4260 Hallock Street in the City of Emeryville. It's within 1,000 feet of the subject property for the BMR redevelopment, and as such, I am recusing myself, and I turn the gavel over to Madam Vice Mayor to take this one. I have left the dais.
So item 10.8, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville authorizing the City Manager to accept in-lut funds from BMR 53rd LP to contribute towards Emergency Operations Center. We will take public comment on this item. As I don't see any hands raised or any speakers at the podium, Madam Clerk, did we receive any written comments for item 10.8?
No, Vice Mayor Welch.
Thank you. Public comment is now closed. I will turn to the members for discussion. Is there any discussion on item 10.8? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Motion by Member Mora.
Second.
Second by Member Cor. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Prideforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers is recused.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We're on to public hearings. We have two this evening. Item 11 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville establishing the fiscal year 2024 Property and Business Improvement District Annual Assessment Levy for the respective parcels within the improvement district with a 3% rate increase on all parcels approving a preliminary budget for the Emeryville Transportation Management Association. And is there anybody here from ETMA who would like to present? Is there, let me ask, members of the council, do you wish to receive a presentation on the TMA's budget? Is there anybody who opposes the request for unanimous consent to waive the presentation on the TMA budget? There's no opposition. Presentation has been waived. Thank you, staff. At this time, I'll entertain public comment. This is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, the time is 8:02 PM. The public hearing is now open. A member of the public wishing to comment at open hearing has three minutes to do so. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment at hearing on this item? Do we receive any written comments for this public hearing?
No, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, time is 8:03. The public hearing is closed. I'll turn to members for discussion. Members, there is a request to approve the assessment levy at a rate of 3% on all parcels for the next fiscal year. Is there anybody who would like to discuss the item? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval.
A second. Motion by Vice Mayor Welch, second by Mayor Bowers to approve the resolution for the TMA. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Prideforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye, the resolution is approved. We'll move to a second public hearing. Item 11.2 is introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending Chapter 9 of Title 4 of the Emeryville Municipal Code titled "Vehicular Traffic and Parking, Sequo Exempt." And Josie Ahrens will present this item. Good evening.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for having me. April, I'm not sure if you're able to show this. Awesome. Thank you. So here to talk about our curb color process. Currently, in the City of Emeryville, we don't have a formal process for members of the public to request curb color changes. We've sort of done it ad hoc, and the ordinance that is before you today is to formalize that process. In addition to that process, the municipal code currently does not have white curbs designated in the code. The ordinance before you proposes adding in white curbs. And the final piece of the ordinance is to designate authority to the Transportation Commission to establish different curb color zones in the city. Currently, that authority is with the full City Council. Most cities approve curb color changes administratively, so this change is in line with our neighboring jurisdictions. And the ordinance also provides a provision for, at the Transportation Committee's discretion, to forward the request on to the full council. So what is on the screen right now is an outline of the proposed approval process. There will be a new Google form available online for members of the public to use. We are proposing that the fee is a flat $100 rate. That is to make the request accessible to members of the public, but not have the barrier be so low that some members may use it very frequently. And I guess we don't need to open up the Google form, but the link is live, so you can look at the form if you'd like. The part two there is the outline of the process. So we are proposing that the Transportation Committee becomes responsible for approving curb color changes, and we'll hear items on their monthly meetings. A public notice of the proposed change would be posted within the vicinity of the location three business days prior to the hearing date. The Transportation Committee will hear the item, and then if approved at the Transportation Committee, the Committee will direct Public Works to complete the permitting process and install the zone within 60 days. Further down in the document is just a breakdown for members of the public, the different kinds of zones. The blue zone currently is housed under the jurisdiction of the City Clerk's office because it is an ADA accessibility and compliance issue. There is no fee for that application, and this is not proposing to change any process with the blue curbs. But if you would like to submit a request for that, you can follow that link. The next page outlines the proposed four zones that would exist in Emeryville. All of these exist except for the white zone currently. Yellow is commercial loading. Red zones are no parking zones. White zones would become a specific passenger loading and unloading zone, and then the green zones would be short-term parking. That is my high-level overview. I look forward to your, oh, I'm sorry, one other item. This did go to the Transportation Committee at the April 10 meeting of this year and was approved unanimously to be forwarded to the full City Council. And the $100 fee that we proposed was added to the master fee schedule, which was proposed May 2 of this year.
Thank you so much, Josie. This is a public hearing, as it is an ordinance, so I will, Madam Clerk, open the public hearing at 8:07 PM. All members of the public who wish to comment in the public hearing on the reading for the first reading of this ordinance will have three minutes to speak. Are there any members of the public here to comment on the curb color item this evening? And do we receive any written comments?
No, Mayor.
Okay, there are no hands raised online. Madam Clerk, 8:08, the public hearing is closed, and I'll turn to council members for discussion. Are there any members who wish to discuss? You have something you'd like to say, Member Carr?
Yes, I was wondering if, was it discussed at the Transportation Committee? I know I remember this presentation, but there was some item that was about August being a recess for the Transportation Committee. Is it part of the curb?
It's in here, yeah. So staff took that direction, and if members look at the agenda packet, you'll see that on page 2 of 8 of the proposed ordinance, under sub-paragraph C, "Meetings," it now reads, "The Transportation Committee shall hold regular meetings on a monthly basis," in their parentheses, "except August." So it is, they did take our recommendation.
Thank you.
Others who have comments? Member Mora.
I just wanted to say it sounds sensible and reasonable, and it's not clear what the downsides, if any, there are to adopting this policy.
I'll just express a deep appreciation to Josie and staff. We, former councilmember Medina and I, were the Transportation Committee before we had Member Carr join us, and so we've worked on this for over a year now, and it was a really needed improvement to the ordinance. There was not a clear process, so we had businesses and other community members who weren't quite sure how to get curb adjustments made in the city. The staff were looking for guidance on the frequency of requests and how to process them, and there wasn't really a standardized way. We were just accepting emails. And so this process is streamlined. It's administrative in nature, and the adjustments that this ordinance makes will make a better use of staff time as well as council time going forward. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to read this ordinance by title only.
I will second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Bowers, second by Vice Mayor Welch to read the ordinance by title only. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Prideforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye, the motion being passed. City Attorney, please.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending Chapter 9 of Title 4 of the Emeryville Municipal Code, quote, "vehicular traffic and parking," end quote, "sequo determination exempt pursuant to sequo guidelines," Section 15378 and 15061, subsection B, subsection 3.
Thank you. Is there any member who wishes to discuss the ordinance further? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the ordinance.
Sure, I'll move to approve the ordinance.
I will second.
Thank you. Motion by Carr, second by Welch to approve the ordinance. It's okay, one second. Approve the ordinance. Member Prideforce is recognized.
Yeah, thank you. So this is one of those things that I'm completely ignorant about. I don't know how to drive, so I don't know anything about this. And so, and I probably am not alone. So in the process of all of this, will there be some education to people before implementation? Or is this too early now to talk about that?
Josie, would you like to answer the question about this? This is kind of an existing thing, but we're formalizing some of it. Would you like to go over that?
There's no current plan to provide formal education to the public. This, the document that I just shared will be posted online, which provides information about the different kinds of zones. And then the Microsoft Form will also be available, which provides steps through the process. So currently, like the mayor shared, if someone wants to change a curb color, they have to email staff, and there's kind of that back and forth. So putting that information sharing through this document and then through the form will hopefully ease some of that, but we don't have a current plan to do proactive communication. It's just if someone comes to us, they will find more information.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, yeah, of course. Member Carr made the motion, seconded by Vice Mayor Welch. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Prideforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye, the ordinance is approved at first reading. Move to action items. Item 12.1 and its subparts is the 40th Street Multimodal Project, and I'll invite Ryan, there he is, Ryan O'Connell to come up, Senior Civil Engineer.
All right. All right. Thank you, Honorable City Council, for having me here today. I'm here with my project team. I'm Ryan O'Connell, Senior Civil Engineer in the Public Works Department, and we have --
Jennifer Harmon with Diablo Engineering Group, the head designer for the project.
Yeah. So we're here today to talk about some scope additions to our design phase of the 40th Street Multimodal Project, and the project is put together in collaboration with Caltrans, Alameda CTC, Emery Go Round, and AC Transit. Next slide. So the 40th Street Multimodal Project is a transformative project that will improve transportation conditions for bus riders, pedestrians, and cyclists in Emeryville. The project focuses on redesign of the 40th Street corridor with the aim of enhancing connectivity, safety, and efficiency for various modes of transportation. Also shown on this map is just an overall view showing an extension of the project called Phase 2, which we'll get into later in the slides. Next slide. So you can see some of the existing conditions along 40th Street are above, with limited outdated facilities such as at-curb loading for the transit, bike lanes that are unprotected. And so what this project is trying to do is reduce bus travel times along the corridor, which improves the reliability and makes better connections to jobs, shopping, and regional transit centers. We want to transform the transit stops to be best-of-class examples for the rest of our region. And beyond the stops, the ped-friendly improvements across the corridor will be put into widened sidewalks, improve intersection crossings, and increase in safety and comfort throughout. Additionally, we have the goal of creating comfortable, low-stress bike facilities throughout this project and creating these better connections to the overall Emeryville bike network, which improves connections for commuters and recreational riders alike. Next slide. So the concept design came to council in March 2020, where it was finalized. In our general plan, 40th Street and San Pablo is a major transit hub. 40th Street and San Pablo are major transit streets and regional retail access routes. It emphasizes its role as a vital multimodal connector. It emphasizes its role as a vital multimodal connector in our city. So the project concept design shows a major transit hub at the corner of San Pablo and Fortieth, where many AC Transit, Emmergo Round routes connect. It includes bus-only lanes in each direction from Adeline to IKEA in the eastbound and westbound direction. It includes a two-way separated bikeway on the north side of Fortieth Street. It includes pedestrian safety improvements throughout the corridor at all transit stops, widened sidewalk areas, and crossing improvements. And then again, there's intersection improvements, and we'll be looking at closures in this presentation, which I want to clarify that these are access restrictions from Fortieth Street. So just a history of how we've gotten here today. Like I said--
Oh, next slide.
Oh, next slide, yeah, yeah, sorry. Let's see. So how we got here today was in March 2020, council approved the project concept, and in that resolution, they directed staff to investigate the ins and outs from Fortieth Street, and that has morphed into looking at closing some of these unsignalized intersections. In the time from 2020 till now, we've been very aggressive at going for funding for the project through the various phases of project implementation. We got $2 million from Alameda CTC for the design phase. We got $1.3 million from the state through the Active Transportation Program. We additionally got $3.8 million from a housing grant from the state level. And since then, we've gone $8.7 million from Alameda CTC for the construction phase of the project. So in May 2023, we've been, or sorry, back in December 2022, we started design of the project, and we started right away to do the transportation analysis of the project. We debuted some of the traffic analysis at the May 2023 Transportation Committee, got the feedback, and Transportation Committee recommended to move forward with a design alternative of unsignalized intersection closures on the north side of Fortieth Street. So we're here today to review the Fortieth Street design, including looking at the access restrictions on the north side of the unsignalized intersections of Fortieth Street, and considering extending the improvements of the project to Christie Avenue, extending it a half mile. So looking ahead, in summer 2023, we're going to be continuing our stakeholder and committee reviews of the design and outreach, getting, collecting feedback from residents and businesses along the corridor. And in spring 2024, we expect to be complete with the design, come back to council to approve the final scope of work, and authorize the project for bidding. At that point, we'll bid the project out and hopefully begin construction in summer, fall 2024, where the duration of this project is expected to take 12 to 18 months. Next slide. So tonight, before you, you have two decisions with four resolutions. And apologize for how we had to split this one up. It's a little complicated, but we'll talk through it, and hopefully it'll make a little bit more sense. So decision number one is to look at the concept of the side street closures, accompanied by a resolution for that action. Resolution number two is separate from the decision on number one and is for necessary additional design and traffic analysis for these unsignalized intersections on the north side of Fortieth Street. Decision number two is to look at expanding the scope of the project to add the Phase Two extension, and accompanying a resolution to go along with that. And resolution number four is the contract mechanism for the First Amendment contract incorporating the approvals from above, however they fall. So they are shown as blanks in the resolution. They will be filled in with how Resolution One and Two are voted on. And I'll kick it over to Jen.
So to talk a little bit more, sorry, next slide. To talk a little bit more about decision number one, approving concept of the side street closures, which really is not closing those side streets, but restricting access from Fortieth and on to Fortieth to those side streets. So there is a great benefit to pedestrian and bike comfort with having the unsignalized side streets closed to regular vehicle or traffic. That it reduces the conflict points that bikes and pedestrians have with vehicles. It provides opportunity for green infrastructure and additional landscaping and also community gathering area, and those areas could be planned with the community, including landscaping, benches, or other amenities to the community. The impacts associated with this are increased truck traffic on Park Avenue, which is minimal. Requires removing truck prohibitions on Park Avenue currently. And we have seen some truck movements being made already from on Park Avenue to these side streets. And then business deliveries are feasible. We've looked at several different truck movements. They do require more time and understanding from the delivery from those driving the trucks, so it is more challenging. And it's less intuitive access to the businesses, especially those that have Fortieth Street addresses. So there's a plan for some signage and ways to mitigate that. Thank you. So the the blue squares, which are a little hard to see on here, are the unsignalized side streets that we're looking at. So the proposal is no regular vehicle traffic accessing on to or off of Fortieth Street at Hubbard, Holden, Haven, and Watts. So that traffic would be rerouted to Horton, Hollis, Emory, and Park. And those are the signalized intersections along Fortieth Street. Where we, and we can better control the interaction between the vehicles and bikes and peds at those locations. And then we have done a 2023 traffic analysis. There was a traffic analysis also done with the original project approval. And part of this additional analysis was getting current numbers and also looking at what the effects are of having these side street closures. So as far as queuing, the Fortieth Street corridor has negligible increase in queuing. Park Avenue surprisingly doesn't have a change in queuing. Hollis Street corridor has moderate increase in the queue, northbound queues. And then Harlan, it's negligible also. And Horton also has a moderate increase in the queues from the diverted traffic. So the peak hour traffic is from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. And to give an idea of the diverted traffic during that time from these side streets, if they were fully limited access, is about 10 cars diverted to Hollis Street, so increasing from 900 to 910 vehicles. About 33 diverted to Harlan Street, increasing 47 to 48 vehicles. And about 100 cars diverting to Horton, which is increasing from 400 to 500. And really, these aren't huge traffic numbers. The Horton sounds like more, but 500 total is equivalent to like a car per second. And then also, there's no change in operations or level of service between existing conditions today, the proposed approved project, and this revised project to close or limit access to the unsignalized side streets. And one concern, I guess especially is additional Hollis, or additional Hollis traffic and the intersection of Park Avenue and Hollis Street, and how that would look from the original base project is the northbound Hollis Street at Park Q extends about 250 feet. That's item one on there. And with the side street closures, that would increase to about 325 feet total, which is just shy of Fortieth Street. It's about 125-foot increase. On the westbound Park Avenue, turning right on to Hollis, northbound, there's no increase between the approved project and the, with the side street restrictions. And then we have put together some concept graphics of what these access restricted areas would look like. So the full street would still be open, but there would be opportunities for, like this, for landscaping and amenities to the community. We would still have full access for emergency vehicles, and cyclists and pedestrians would still have full access. Sorry, next slide. And this is another view of what that end of a side street closure would look like. It's not really a cul-de-sac, but we have looked at how a vehicle, a medium-sized truck, and a large truck would navigate that. And this is just another, sorry, the next slide. This is just another view of what that, the amenities could look like from Fortieth Street. I'll hand it back to Ryan.
All right, so as part of the design phase, we reached a point where we needed to do community outreach to see the impacts to the businesses if we were to do any closure types on some of these unsignalized intersections. So we did a large outreach effort. We did a quarter-mile within all project areas of Park Avenue and Fortieth Street. We sent out 612 postcards, 460 mailers with additional, like, focus information. You can see a little snippet on the left side in the orange box of what we were telling the community of what we were seeking comments from them. You know, we wanted to hear from everyone. We weren't trying to hide with this project. We want to get very transparent, try to figure out what the loading practices are on the blocks and figure out some solutions if we were to close a street. So we had a lot of in-person meetings as well with stakeholders, which came out to a lot of valuable information that we'll get into a little bit later in the slides. So some of the concerns, as a high-level summary, is concerns of traffic congestion on the surrounding streets and the side streets as they only have one way in or out if we were to close it. Impacts to the property values by having a closure and no access to Fortieth Street. Concerns about the path to reach the business if the right turn is missed by a customer. Let's see. And then, let me see. And then retail storefront access from pass-by trips is a little bit hard to get to generate a pass-by trip if they've already passed the place. And then there's also concerns about maintenance and security of these parklit areas. Next slide. So we also received some positive comments. So there's opportunity for activation of the site, potential value to the nearby property by having a bike ped and green space improvement outside their site. The infrastructure will help employee commutes by bike or walking and improve the safety and comfort from the transit areas to their place of business. And there was some interest of placing art and other recreation in these parklit areas. Next slide. So some staff considerations for council as you make this decision tonight. If we do closures or some type of closure, there will be some minor traffic impacts. They are negligible on most streets, but there are some streets that are moderate. If we do close off access, we would like to incorporate wayfinding signage around the surrounding areas to help guide customers or trucks in and out of the side street areas. As we're going through loading solutions off of Fortieth Street, truck turning movements do seem to be feasible, but to make them work, we would need some additional red curb and to remove truck restrictions on Park to make that happen. And as we came to the businesses and residents in certain areas, partial closures came up, and we do see a solution that is feasible on that, and we would like to preview that with council tonight. So I'll show a few options of a partial closure. Next slide. So what we would do with a partial closure is widen the opening, angle it a bit, just so you can fit the truck in the rear axle into the area. We would incorporate, you know, bollards to make sure that no vehicles are going into the ped or bike space. The opening from the median would be elevated from the street. So next slide. Oh, sorry, this is the backside. So we would incorporate some signage as well to make this clear that you cannot exit out this way and make it a no-wrong-way drivers. Next slide. And on this view, you can see the ped level that we would have the bike lane cycle track elevated from the bus lane, and that would be a safety benefit to slow down drivers as they make the turns through there. And then again, as they get into the parklit area, that would be raised up again to the sidewalk grade and then drop down on the backside and on the turnaround area on the side street. So, next slide. So tonight, we are forwarding the motion that was made by the Transportation Committee, forwarding the concept of closing unsignalized streets on the north side of Fortieth Street at Watts, Haven, Holden, and Hubbard to City Council. We would like to make it clear that this is not an approval action to close the street tonight. We're asking you to review and approve the conceptual design for us to move forward with, and we expect to come back to council at a later date for the final approval, expecting early 2024 for that decision. And we can pause here, or we can get through all the resolutions, and you guys can discuss.
Why don't you show each of the resolutions before we take public comment? Thank you.
Next slide. So resolution number two is separate from resolution number one, but related. This was work necessary to complete the additional traffic analysis and design work to date for these council-directed design decisions from March 2020. So this included looking at these unsignalized intersections in a more holistic nature, looking at the adjacent corridor as we do different versions of closures at each of these unsignalized intersections. This additional design work is $120,232. It is fully funded through outside grants. It would be no hit to the city on that front. It's an eligible expense. Next slide. Decision number two before you today is to extend the project half a mile from the IKEA entrance to Christie Avenue. This project is called Phase Two Bay Trail Gap Closure Project. It's identified in our recently adopted capital improvement program under Project SUT 05. It is fully funded at the moment, but the funds have not been appropriated to any contract or any direction on that. The project is a great benefit to the city. It connects our, this project to our commercial core. It connects to a future Loop project that's proposed in the Showmount Loop area. And doing this project right now is an excellent opportunity. We have a open design contract, and which would allow for an accelerated delivery as we integrate the two, the designs between the two phases. Usually, we'd have two different designers working on this project, and there's a nexus at the, where they meet. And there's a lot of problems sometimes that happen in doing that. So we can integrate the design and kind of streamline some of our phasing of getting this project out to construction. By completing the design right now, it puts us in good position for funding. Like I said earlier, we're funded for design in our capital improvement program, but we are not funded for construction. We expect this project costs $5 million, and right now, we have $1 million for the design phase. So we will be seeking funding at every opportunity available. Next slide. So just showing the two projects together. The original Phase One is from Adeline all the way to the IKEA entrance on the, right past the Showmount Fortieth Street Bridge. The Phase Two would extend the project all the way to Christie Avenue, which is part of the Bay Trail. We're labeling this project the Bay Trail Gap Closure Project, partly due to an MTC study that's region-wide, where they are trying to make safe, comfortable routes along the Bay Trail. Right now, we do have a bike lane on Showmount Street, but it is unprotected. This project would put a cycle track that has protection, making that final connection to the Bay Trail Trailhead at IKEA, which connects to Treasure Island and hopefully someday to San Francisco. So, next slide. So resolution number three is to add the scope of work to do the design, environmental, and other outreach work for the Phase Two project. The total price for this is $656,444. It expands the projects by half a mile, and this is already funded in our CIP project number SUT 05. This action would appropriate the funds in the CIP to this design contract. And next slide. And finally, we have resolution number four, which is a contract mechanism. If you look at the resolution, there are blanks on the resolution title. So depending on how the votes go tonight, we would either do one with Resolution Two, or one with Resolution Three, or one with a combined amount shown here. And, next slide. So just in summary, here are your decisions and resolutions put before you tonight, and we can jump around the slides as needed as questions come up.
Just to be clear, for the resolutions, you need us to take action on all of 12.1.2 through four? The way you made it sound at the end was if we did both, we just need to do the last one. But you're saying we need to do all of these?
All--
All right, just to be clear. Okay, great. So we're going to go to public comment next. Thank you, you can have a seat, and we'll call you back for Q and A. A member of the public who wishes to comment on this item has three minutes to do so. If you would just, if you're here in person and you want to comment, just line up around the first row and just line up back towards the doors, and we'll have you come up in a moment. And any member of the public who is joining us virtually can raise their hands. We have hands raised. We'll go to members who are in person first. So I'll invite the first speaker up to the-- So I'll invite the first speaker up to the... Staff, do you want to move the computer first, just as a courtesy, so that a lot of people put their hands on it, and then it gets all crazy? Thanks. Okay, first speaker, you're welcome to come up to the podium. And Madam Clerk, we have three minutes for the speaker. Thank you, good evening.
Hi, everyone. City Council, staff, members of the public. I'm here for, I don't know how many times this has been, that I've spoken in support of the 40th Street redesign project here and in other chambers. This is a project that I have been tracking and has come up in meetings that I've participated a number of times. I suppose I should introduce myself. I'm Jordan Wax. I am a member of the Planning Commission. I am the newly-elected Chair of the BPAC, but I'm here tonight speaking as a member of the public during public comment. This is such an important project, in my view, because it is something that addresses both the needs of this community and the needs of the region at the same time. In fact, I've said a number of times that I believe that the 40th Street redesign is possibly the most important public works project that we have going, because bus reliability through this corridor is incredibly important to our residents. It's important to people trying to make the decision on how to commute. It is important in whether or not we're able to draw business traffic from around the region, and it's important to everybody who passes through our community and has little or no say in our politics. I believe that we still have a responsibility to those people who don't vote here. And this particular item, the side street closures, that has been added to this is something to consider, is, I think, a very important addition to consider, because if you watch buses coming down 40th, and I live right down the street, you will notice that the number-one thing that slows them down is cars turning in front of them. Every side street that we leave open grants another opportunity for buses, even in a red lane, to be interrupted. And if you've ridden a bus or waited for a bus, you know what a big deal that is. You also know what a big deal it is to not know when your bus is going to arrive. If we want people to be able to depend on buses, we need them to have dependable schedules. Otherwise, they can't commute with them. Otherwise, they experience all the problems that I experience on a regular basis trying to actually get around this area via bus, because especially coming through this corridor, the reliability is so bad. And so I think we have, like, some issues to consider here. I use Park all the time. It's a very pleasant walk. It's beautiful. It's gorgeous. I intentionally walk down Park, even if it's out of my way, all of the time. But Park is a very underutilized street. And so when I think about priorities of protection of the excellent business community, managing this public transit corridor, and like marginal impacts on the pleasantness of Park Street, I know which two out of three I have to pick, and it's not the marginal pleasantness of Park Street. So I would recommend that the City Council think about those priorities in that order when considering these items. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Welcome, next speaker. Good evening.
Good evening, City Council members. Mayor Bowders. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is James McGoey. I've been a business owner, a commercial and residential property owner, resident of Emeryville for nearly a quarter century. During that time, I've witnessed the continued transformation of the formerly dubbed rottenest city on the Pacific Coast into a thriving urban landscape, underpinned by a diverse ecosystem of small business, retail tech, biotech, and increasingly, those calling Emeryville home. What I consider amongst the most enviable aspects of Emeryville is the life-work balance fostered through and reflected in city planning. Which brings me to the matter at hand, namely, the 40th Street multimodal project. While much as proposed is highly laudable from my perspective, I have serious reservations in regard to the street closure, specifically Watts Street. In comparison to others slated for closure, in the words of the children's song, "One of these things is not like the others. One of these things just doesn't belong." Watts Street is indeed different. Only Watts Street has eight separately addressed businesses opening exclusively to the side street. Those businesses have no other means of ingress egress. Those businesses also comprise nearly 70,000 square feet opening to Watts. Only Watts Street is situated adjacent to and flows directly into the gates of Pixar. Imagine if you would, what might unfold as vehicles attempt to navigate 183 turnaround on Watts and exit back onto Park Avenue, and what of larger-sized vehicles and trucks? Can you foresee the ensuing mayhem caused by 40-foot trucks having no alternative but to back out of Watts, onto Park, at the gates of Pixar? That scenario would become a regular occurrence. That's an untenable outcome, and one that must not be imposed on area businesses and residents. In closing, I'd ask respectfully that you'd reconsider and choose instead from alternatives to full closure, some of which have been previously discussed with Mayor Bowders. I submit that installation of perhaps a designated stop sign for bicycle lanes crossing a corner of 40th and Watts would serve to not only obviate the need for traffic turnaround on Watts and any overflow issues on Park Avenue, but also prove prudent from a safety standpoint. Cyclists are already mandated to stop at signalized intersections at Adeline, San Pablo, and Emory. The stop sign at Watts is not an undue burden on anyone. Let's take great care, and I know you will, not to displace or disenfranchise the many hard-working, small-business people who have contributed mightily to the city we are, and most importantly, the city we aspire to be. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Welcome, next speaker. Good evening.
Good evening, Council and staff. My name is Michael Panico. I'm the CEO and owner of North Bay Networks. I own and operate businesses at 4052, 4062, 4072, and 4080 Watts. So I own and operate every single building on Watts Street on the eastern side. My company has been here for 22 years, and I employ 70-plus people, and we're an international company. So I receive, we're a logistics company, a global logistics company. So my company distributes computer technology for global clients all over the world. So I am directly impacted by the closure of Watts Street at 40th. So on a daily basis, we receive up to 500 packages a day, and we have freight trucks that come on a daily basis to pick up and drop off 40-footers and 52-foot big rigs coming in that have to parallel in the street and unload via forklift. So I have a major concern with the impact to my business with the closure of 40th, not only for the operational side of my business to continue and my employees to work there, but as well as the safety of the closure happening, where those trucks would then have to come down Park Street and make a right or a left onto the street and subsequently be jackknifed if they had to exit. They wouldn't be able to turn around, and same with fire trucks, and same with the garbage and recycle trucks coming on a daily basis to access. I just don't think that the traffic study that was conducted took into account the way these trucks would enter and exit only via Park. And I am a bicyclist. I ride almost every single day from Oakland, born and raised in Oakland my entire life. So I come down 40th from Claremont, and I ride home the same way. And I'm also 100% for the beautification and the protection of the community. So I'm all for everything. I just think there needs to be somewhat of a happy meeting here to protect my business and the way we operate. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, next speaker. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is David Bowie. I'm an attorney. I'm also, I'm here on behalf of Budner Properties, but I have a personal interest as well, and that is that I've owned commercial property here at Emeryville for about 30 years. My property is at Christie and Powell. It's the FedEx Office Building, which was developed into that particular use a number of years ago. And I've watched Emeryville mature over that 30-year time period, and it's done a wonderful job. I'm very pleased to be a part of the community. But my client and I are very concerned, not about the project itself in terms of its entirety, but about the side street closures. We think that's a really poor idea. I think it's also very premature. One of the things that struck me is that, as far as I can tell, there's only been community outreach for the last couple of months, and the closing of side streets is a major issue. I'm not aware that there's really been an extensive traffic study of the impacts of the closure. I asked about that from staff, and I was told there's still traffic study ongoing. This evening, I heard there was going to be more traffic study. So why would you go ahead and approve a concept study for closure before there's been a traffic study to determine what the actual impact might be? I think that's the wrong order in which to go about this. The other thing is simply this: We know that many of these areas are underdeveloped and underutilized. My clients are on Hubbard Street at that particular intersection. Those properties are way underutilized. They will be redeveloped, and no one knows what the traffic is going to be like under a higher and better use. So a traffic study that looks at current traffic and concentration of traffic is utterly useless in terms of determining what the impact is going to be on the development of those properties by closing the intersection. And the city has a vital interest in seeing all of that area redeveloped. There's another point that I referred to in the letter I sent to all of you, and I think it's an important one. And that is, it appears to me that the city of Oakland and the city of Emeryville have a boundary line that goes right through this intersection. And I was able to get a photo today of a map of the area, which appears to confirm what I believed to be the case, which is that this is not an intersection that's solely within the jurisdiction of Emeryville. It's actually within the jurisdiction of Oakland as well. I don't think, and I would question, that you would have the authority to close a street when you don't have exclusive jurisdiction over that street. Now, I do understand this is a joint operating authority. I was not able to chase down the actual extent of that authority, but I suspect it deals with issues such as maintenance and things of that sort, not the basic threshold question whether there should be an actual closure of the street. As I mentioned in my letter, everything that you do is a balancing of interests, and I appreciate bicycles and pedestrians, and I appreciate the attempts to have landscaping and beauty. That's very, very important, and this city's done a great job of creating that kind of environment.
That's your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, next speaker. Welcome.
Hi there, Bobby Lee. I'm wearing two different hats tonight, so tonight, first, as just a resident over on Bay Street, I just wanted to point out a few things here. There's a lot of double parking on Park and on 40th that happens day in and day out. I wonder if the traffic analysis took that into effect or took it into consideration, because if the assumption is those roadways are going to be used to collect the vehicles that would have gone on the side streets, how does a double-park truck, multiple trucks day in and day out, how does that affect that analysis? By redirecting and funneling the traffic to Hollis and Horton, there is a potential to slow down Emory Go- Round and the Emory Express, the queue lengths that were mentioned earlier by the engineering firm. You know, that could add potentially minutes to a trip, so something to consider. There was something in the stakeholder analysis from the staff report mentioning Hubbard as a sort of last chance for folks to divert off of 40th. Now, one of the problems that I see further up as we look at Phase Two of this project is folks potentially making U-turns further up on Showmount Street. That happens today, trucks and vehicles and Ubers and so on. They make U-turns further up. That could cause a problem a little bit further upstream, so something to be considerate of. And of course, with Phase Two affecting Bay Street, we are very eager to hear what those changes would look like. Putting on my other hat today, as Chair of the ETMA, this project has progressed a lot. I think the board would be very appreciative of an updated presentation on both the 40th Street side as well as Phase Two and the Showmount Loop, and that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome, next speaker.
Hi there. I'm Sam Gould. I'm a member of the BPAC as well as a resident that lives very close to the project site, and I just wanted to come and show my support for this project. It's actually one of the reasons I moved to the city, was my excitement for this project's completion, and I think that it's a great benefit to the local community. Like, everyone knows there's great mental health benefits if you live close to Greenery. This is a chance to activate spaces that are currently just gray and concrete and give people an actual gathering place to make it a community. I don't think, there are solutions to the street closures that might accommodate a lot of these concerns. I did a lot of traveling these past few weeks on my honeymoons to countries with much more pedestrianization as we have here, and one thing you'll see everywhere is retractable bollards to restrict access to important vehicles. Every single morning, the bollards are down for trucks to make their deliveries, and then they go up and turn it into a pedestrian space where people gather around the business, and it's much more lively, but you don't have that constant conflict, because unsignalized intersections are the most dangerous conflict points if you're a pedestrian or on a bike, because people will just fly down that turn and turn right into you. And this is a protected bike lane where you should feel safest. It's people's first impression on the city, coming from MacArthur-Bart. Either the Emory Go- Round or on a bike, this is how you will view the city, and I feel like we should set a strong first impression, especially as on our track to Vision Zero, where we want no more pedestrian fatalities. We should solve all these conflict points and minimize chances for these encounters. And as well as with the Emory Go- Round, everyone knows that if you walk to 40th Street and you see the Emory Go- Round in the distance, you see it go, stop, go, stop, as every single car turns in front of it. And this is a chance to reduce that conflict, so now there's only four signalized intersections where people are meant to make turns into the city, and you don't have that constant conflict point. So if you're not using a car, now you have a chance to actually have a reliable method of transportation. So, yeah, I'm very supportive of this project and hope we look into some solution that allows street closures, but doesn't hurt the businesses as well. I know it's a tough balance, but it's very important that we prioritize pedestrians as well as businesses.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome, next speaker.
Can I use this to make some projections of the pictures?
We don't have it turned on. I'm sorry, we can't do that. If you have something to pass out, you can pass it out if you have copies of it, or we can have the clerk make copies for people.
No, I have copies.
You can pass it to the clerk, and the clerk will give it to everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, anybody who has those things, you pass it to the clerk now, and the clerk will pass it out to all council members, please. Yeah, give those to her, and she'll pass those down to us.
Mayor Bowders, a member of the City Council. My name is Chi Sing Shao. I'm President of CHS Consulting Group. We've been retained by Granite Expo to help them make assessment of the impact of the multimodal project and their operation, and explore potential win-win solutions to allow the project to move through. It's a wonderful project, and also to not impact their operation. Just very briefly, you are familiar with Granite Expo. They get about 15 to 25 deliveries by large-size trucks every day, and about 150 to 250 pickups from their customers. The size of the truck they operate, it's typically between 10 to 3 in the middle of the day, not in the morning and afternoon commute pick hours. And the size of truck, typically a true, one is the single unit, and theirs is a 35-foot-long truck. The other one is a semi-truck, which is 50-foot-long truck. So first one we did, we did a testing of the truck turning template, and that's the one they're most concerned about. And with the closure, trucks will have to use Park Avenue to get in and out. And as you know, right here, at the intersection, there's a corner bobout, so it basically restricts the width of the roadway at intersection. So first, we tested the single unit, 35-foot truck, and for the northbound, Bolton, right turn to Park Avenue, they would clip the corner a little bit, and so could potentially impact the pedestrians standing at the street corner. So you can imagine a semi-50-foot-sized truck, and they won't be able to make that turn, or they have to make multiple turns in order to get in and get out. So that's the impact we examined. And then we look at potential opportunities that you can design a project without closure. And so there are two things. One is that the bus lane will have, I understand a lot of concern about bus delays, so the trucks and the buses will have to use bus lane to make a turn. That's one issue. And the second one, not only they make a turn in the bus lane, they will have to cross the protected bicycle lane. So what I provided in there, the first picture shows how So, what I provided in there, the first picture shows how vehicles and trucks being allowed using bus lane to make turns. And this is a project in a very big city, New York City.
That's your comment time. Your time is up. Thank you.
That's quick, huh?
Three minutes.
Hi, my name is Kenneth Katzoff. I'm a partner at Katzoff and Riggs. I'm here representing Granite Expo. I'm also representing my firm, who's been a law firm in Emeryville. We own property here for the last twenty-five, thirty years. I've listened to all the speakers, including the gentleman who owned property on Watts, and one thing strikes out to me is that this needs to be studied more. We, they have a consultant, you've received the CHS report. What he was going to say, but he only had three minutes, is that San Francisco, Chicago, London, major cities of the world are able to have bike lanes coexist and bus lanes without closing streets. I'm an avid bicyclist. I commute to work. In fact, this weekend, I took the ferry, went over the Bay Bridge, came to Emeryville. My client is losing twenty spaces along Fortyth. He's fine with that and the bus lane, but his business depends on customers being able to turn off Fortyth, and I think they can do it in a safe way. If you read the CHS report, you'll see, just like every other major city, I bike in San Francisco. There's protected bike lanes, but bicyclists understand, whether it's a stop sign or a traffic light, you have to stop to allow businesses, and these are small businesses. You wouldn't be doing this, I don't believe, to Home Depot. I mean, could you imagine if you tried to close a road accessing Home Depot trucks? So, before I'm cut off, this is what I would suggest, and I was a former Chair of the Oakland Planning Commission for three years. We had many controversial projects. I would suggest a study session, this matter gets tabled, have a study session with this City Council. So, the gentleman who owns property on Watts, my client, their experts can give presentations with slides with their expertise. They will pay for CHS consulting to educate this council. I'm sure the people on Watts will hire their own experts. This is too important to these businesses. They will lose millions of dollars, and those millions of dollars, we know, when millions of dollars are at stake from small business, what do they do? They, there's conflict, and that's what we don't want. Emeryville should be a model of working together, the City Council with the business leaders here. This deserves a full, dedicated study session where presentations can go on for a half-an-hour, forty minutes, from experts to educate the City Council before you spend money. And finally, I would rather see, the idea that you're going to put little parks at the end of Holden and Watts, I'd rather see that money-
That's your time.
Let me finish this thought. I'd rather see that money-
That's your time, sir. Sir, you're being disrespectful of this body right now.
I'm being disrespectful-
Yes, the time, everyone gets three minutes. If you keep talking, then I have to justify to other people why I haven't given-
I just wanted to finish the sentence.
We've received your letter. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to finish the sentence. Thank you for your courtesy.
You're welcome. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, my name is Zoe Chakovsky. I'm here on behalf of Granite Expo, but also myself as a commuter. I just have a couple comments to what has already been said by Mr. Katzoff and Mr. Shao. Previous commenter mentioned the marginal pleasantness of Park Street. And as a commuter down Park Street, I certainly care about its pleasantness, and I believe that part of this project is about beautifying the city. But more so than that, it is about the safety of cyclists. I am a cyclist myself. I am hesitant to cycle in the Bay Area and in Emeryville due to safety concerns, and I'm very excited to hear that the safety of cyclists is being promoted or considered to be promoted and protected in this way. But redirecting the traffic of numerous cars and especially trucks, trucks used by my client Granite Expo, by their suppliers and their customers onto Park Street would also create significant safety concerns for cyclists blocked by these trucks, and also for emergency vehicles, garbage vehicles, fire trucks, as mentioned by previous commenters. I believe that more study of traffic impacts is necessary for this project to proceed for the benefit of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome, next speaker.
Hi, my name is Effie Alor. I work for Public Floor. I'm here on behalf of Granite Expo. We are one of the major suppliers for Granite Expo. We sell floors. We have a lot of deliveries a month to Granite Expo from the port with fifty-three footer trucks. If this close, Holden going to close down, it would be very difficult for our driver to turn. It's going to create a lot of traffic in this area. Those trucks are not able to do that, and I'm not talking even about safety, which is the most important thing for pedestrian, for everybody else walking on the street. So, as one that handles all the operation for the company of Republic Floor, it would be very difficult to make deliveries to Granite Expo, and safety is number one for us as a company, and we're trying to do it for all. So, I want you to take it under consideration that for us as a company, Granite Expo would be very difficult to do a delivery. The way that we do delivery right now, we basically go to into Holden Street, and then we forward to the parking lot and backwards to the warehouse, offload everything, and then it's an easy way out to Forty-Eighth Street from there. That's the best way, the easiest way. Otherwise, we'll have to go through the small streets where you don't have enough space to turn, and we're talking about safety here, which is the most important thing. Thank you very much, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment. Good evening, welcome, next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alexis Gould. I live very close to Forty-Fifth Street, and I'm very, very excited about the Forty-Fifth Street project. And I am here to speak in support of everything that was presented tonight, especially the street closures. I'm somebody who frequently uses all of those streets connecting to Forty-Fifth Street as I ride the fifty-seven bus to my work, take the Emory Go- Round, go to Michael's Craft Store. And I think that it is of utmost importance to close these streets to make it more safe for pedestrians and cyclists. Yes, it is an inconvenience to businesses and delivery trucks to close these streets. However, it is an inconvenience that will be fixed in a couple of months that it takes for everyone to adjust to it. It's not something that is going to continually be confusing to people. It's something that people will be able to adjust to and move on from, and say a year after the project is complete, nobody will even remember how it used to be. I think that it is very sad to imagine that the safety of Emeryville residents and commuters in this area would be diminished by not closing some of these streets. And I think that these streets can be closed in a way that would be, would make everybody happier. You know, I've heard retractable bollards mentioned earlier. I think there are solutions that could be investigated to allow these streets to be, have very limited access, but I think the bottom line is, is with the Forty-Fifth Street improvements and the bike, the two-way cycle track and the widening of sidewalks and the increased traffic that will inevitably come from this project, I think it's of utmost importance not to pull back, but to go all-in on safety and the comfort of everybody in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Welcome, next speaker.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kaia. I work at Granite Expo as the employee. Today, as I stay here, is try to express our concern as the employee and our customer regarding the proposal closer of the unsignaled street. Since our company is selling, is the retail store is selling the heavy material countertop, kitchen cabinet, and flooring, everything, our customer have to rely on the truck and the van to pick up the material. If the day closes, you know, if the city has made a decision, close out the street, so that our customer have to park as maybe as the far away and also it's difficult to recognize is the store entrance, because our company is the address and the entrance is located in the Forty-Fifth Street. Besides that, our employee has lost the parking space and the customer has lost about twenty parking, the street parking space, the most important is maybe is causing the damage and the difficult part to our vendor, the supplier. Our vendor, the supplier mostly is to drive the forty, thirty-four feet as the vehicle, so it's made a difficult part to if the close out the street. It's difficult as the get into from the park avenue, get into the Holden Street, and also it's difficult to get out. Another concern, you know, is that our customer will struggle fight the parking space because, you know, they never realize where is our company's location. So, in conclusion, we support the city's bike plan and the bike infrastructure, but however, we urge the city to consider the business needs. So, we believe that the balanced approach can be achieved by finding alternative solution that combine together, work together, the city's goal for the transportation and the business needs for the community. Thank you for this consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have hands raised online. I'd like to ask that you first recognize Brooks Jessup for three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Brooks Jessup. I am a resident here in Emeryville, as well as a registered business owner and a member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I wanted to express my support for the resolution, particularly Resolution Number One, referring to the closures or at least restricted access to the unsignaled intersections along the north side of Forty-Fifth Street. I live a couple blocks away from the project site on Hubbard Street, and I bike every morning from Hubbard onto Fortyth. Hubbard being one of the, one of the side streets with the restricted access in the proposal. And I believe that the proposed closures, when combined with the new bike infrastructure along Forty-Fifth Street, will greatly improve the bikeability and the walkability of the neighborhood and the safety of those who are biking and walking along the Forty-Fifth Street corridor. And specifically, I think it will, as has been expressed by others, minimize the points of conflict at these intersections between bikes and much larger vehicles, oftentimes several tons in weight, right, cars and trucks, and reduce the level of traffic stress for bicyclists in particular. I also really like the concept of the parklets. I think they do look beautiful and they will beautify the neighborhood. And so, overall, I urge the council to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Madam Clerk, please recognize Robert Prince for three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor.
We somehow remuted him. There we go.
All right, I'm back. Can you hear me?
We can't. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is Robert Prince, Abicie Director with Bike East Bay. I'm a current Emeryville resident. Been a nearby Oakland resident for over twenty years. Also a former member of the Emeryville BPAC, who termed out earlier this year and previously Chair of the BPAC in 2010 and 11 during the previous bike plan update. I want to note that Bike East Bay, who I work for as an organization, has written letters in support of Emeryville's grant applications for this project, so we're very happy to see it moving forward. Today, there were actually three different protected bikeway projects up for vote at East Bay City Councils. There was Fourteenth Street in downtown Oakland, which was approved unanimously. Cycle Track, similar to the Forty-Fifth Street proposal, but on Grand Street and Alameda, which was approved by their City Council just a few seconds ago. So let's make a hat-trick and get this Forty-Fifth Street project approved as well. The context of this project includes not only this street, but connections to future protected bikeway and bus lanes on San Pablo Avenue continuing to downtown Oakland, South Berkeley, as well as a bike lane upgrade on the Oakland side of Forty-Fifth Street to MacArthur-Bart with paving in a few years. Someday, it'll also be a main connector route to the Bay Bridge path all the way to San Francisco. Cycle Tracks are great and very well represented in the East Bay with over twenty already installed throughout Alameda, contract Costa counties, and many more planned. An aspect of Cycle Track design that requires attention is definitely intersections either controlled or uncontrolled to make sure bike traffic can proceed straight through or make turns in all directions safely and conveniently without conflicting with other vehicle movements. Obviously, reducing the number of conflict points is the most effective means for reducing the danger, and so we support opportunities to do that along this corridor. I appreciate the vehicle turn analysis that staff has performed and have trusted their analysis on many other similar projects I've interacted with in the past. I'm not, I'm not an expert, but I know that curb radii can be adjusted and red curbs can be added to enable turns that might not currently be realistic for large vehicles. I do expect that staff have been considering these options and encourage them to continue working with the business owners to design for these needs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Madam Clerk, I'd like to recognize Josh Cohen for three minutes. Good evening, Speaker.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and Staff. My name is Josh Cohen, and I am on the Emeryville BPAC, speaking today as a member of the community. I walk bike and take transit in Emeryville, and I strongly support staff's well-thought-out plan for Forty-Fifth Street multimodal improvements, including street closures and the Phase Two extension of the project. In particular, prioritizing safety and efficiency of transit riders, pedestrians, and people on bikes of all ages and abilities is simply the right thing to do. It aligns with Emeryville's active transit plan, local, regional, and global climate goals, and will reduce the number of injuries and deaths on particularly dangerous corridor. Emeryville has an opportunity here to continue its excellent pattern of rethinking road safety and set the standard for the Bay Area at large. I currently avoid riding my bike on Fortyth when I want to get across town or to the many businesses on and near Fortyth for safety concerns, even when it is the most convenient route. Adopting this plan and implementing bus-only lanes, street closures on the north side, protected bikeway, and safe pedestrian crossings will change mine and many other lives for the better. I feel strongly that you should adopt the recommendations staff has presented here, including the Phase Two extension. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Madam Clerk, I'd like to recognize Saskia Martinez for three minutes, please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Saskia Martinez. I'm an Emeryville resident. I've lived here for three years, and you may tell from my accent that I grew up in Europe. I actually grew up in the Netherlands. And so I can give firsthand experience of what it was like growing up with protected psychopaths. Throughout my childhood, my teenage years, I had such freedom and joy, mental and physical health from riding my bike. And of course, not only did it help my health and well-being, it was a wonderful contribution to the climate. I think many of us here have been seeing the devastating news about climate change throughout the world, but definitely here in the US. And projects like this build up to have a lasting impact for generations to come, both on our own safety and in the, in our greater world. And I also have two children. I have a four-month-old and I have a two-and-a-half-year-old. I cycle them around Emeryville in a bike trailer, and I feel proud to do that. I feel like I'm giving them the childhood that I had and that I wish that they have as they get older. But honestly, every time I put them in the bicycle trailer, I worry. I think, is this a responsible thing for me as a parent to be doing? Will a car turn and hit the trailer not seeing it? Every intersection I approach, I approach with caution and fear, and I want to change that. I want to approach intersections with confidence. I want to smile and wave to other cyclists and pedestrians and continue building Emeryville to be the wonderful biking and pedestrian-friendly city it is. I am planning in two weeks to start guiding my two kids to their Emeryville East Bay German International School on San Pablo. I have yet to find a great bike path which I feel is really safe. I feel like this project is going to be a really big step in helping me feel confident in transporting my kids to and from school on the bike happily and safely. I thank you for your time. This is the first town meeting I've attended. I'm a bit nervous. I want to say thank you for making the time and space available, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Madam Clerk, I'd like to recognize Jesse Olson for three minutes, please. Good evening, Speaker.
Good evening. Thank you for granting me the time to speak today. My name is Jesse Olson. I am a newly admitted member of the Emeryville BPAC, and I want to thank the council for giving me this opportunity to serve the Emeryville community. I want to release my support for the resolution. Solution One, as someone who works on Park Ave between Hollis and Horton, as someone who is a cyclist who rides down Park, and as a longtime rider of the F87. I was a little surprised to hear the feedback from those who have businesses on Watts, given that Watts is the widest street that is part of this plan. Watts is so wide that cars can park perpendicular to the curb on both sides of the street without impacting traffic, traffic, traffic down the street. I'm pretty confident that rethinking of the parking on Watts could help to mitigate some of the issues that these people are bringing up. And I want to also add that I- I'm pretty confident that rethinking of the parking on Watts could help to mitigate some of the issues that these businesses are bringing up. And I want to also add that I have personally seen lift trailers make complete U-turns in the Park-Watts intersection in front of the Pixar sign. With all this said, I want to applaud the work of planners for incorporating the feedback of local businesses to mitigate any issues that those businesses would face with this proposal. And I'm confident that they can find workable solutions for the issues brought up by those business members that we heard.
Thank you for your comment. There are no more hands raised online. Madam Clerk, you have written comments for this item?
Yes, Mayor. I have two.
Please read each comment for not more than three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, first comment is from Laura McCamey. "I support all aspects of the Fortieth Street multimodal project, including the intersection closures at non-signalized cross streets. This will provide critical protection for people biking and walking from potential injury. When people turn corners in their cars, they often don't pause long enough to see if a bicyclist or pedestrian is in the intersection, and crossing intersections is the highest-risk element of any bike route. In addition, as more SUVs and pickup trucks have bigger grills, the chance for serious injury and death increases, as do the blind spots that prevent drivers from seeing what's in front of them. This is on my mind because on July 17, I had my closest call ever while crossing Powell Street. A driver of one of those giant pickup trucks turned onto Powell from Doyle and did not see me, even though I was directly in front of his vehicle. I was saved only by the fact that he was going slowly and that I was able to run out of the way, escaping with a bruised cheekbone and jangled nerves. The plaza spaces envisioned in the current design will transform a hostile environment for vulnerable road users into a pleasant urban space that feels inviting to bike and walk. Please approve the design, including the intersection closures." Right, second comment. "My name is Denise Chung, and together with Jackie Lee, I am one of the owners of Granite Expo. As representatives of Granite Expo, I'm writing to provide our public comment. We would like to express our thoughts and feelings about the bike projects currently underway in Emeryville. Specifically, we would like to address our concerns regarding the closure of Holden Street and its potential impact on our businesses. As you may be aware, the closure of Holden Street would effectively remove access to our store from both customers and suppliers. This disruption in accessibility would prove damaging to our business, as it would limit our ability to serve our valued patrons and receive necessary supplies. However, we would also like to take this opportunity to express our support for the mayor's recommendation made during the July 10 Transportation Committee meeting. The mayor's proposal suggests a partial closure of both Holden and Fortieth Streets. We believe that this compromise would strike a balance between the implementation of the bike projects and preserving our business interests. By voicing our support for the partial closure of Holden and Fortieth Streets, we aim to ensure that the council members are aware of our perspective and endorse this proposed path forward. We remain committed to the overall bike project, as we have previously expressed, and firmly believe that a partial closure of the mentioned streets would be highly beneficial for the city as a whole. Kindly request that you relay our message to the council members, allowing them to understand our position and the potential mutual benefits of adopting this compromise. It is essential for us to have a voice in this matter, and we greatly appreciate your assistance in bringing our concerns and support to the attention of the council. Sincerely, Denise Chung and Jackie Lee, owners of Granite Expo."
Do you have a third comment, or is that it?
No, the speaker already spoke this evening. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other speakers who wish to comment for Item 12.1 who have not had a chance to comment? Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed, and we'll move to discussion and Q and A. I'm going to kick it off if that's okay. So I want to kick it off by just returning, and you're welcome to come up, Ryan. Just returning to a few things that were part of the presentation. I want to thank everybody who stayed out this evening to provide comment. The actions before us tonight are not final actions, as was made clear in the staff presentation. This is about giving the consultant the direction needed to begin the work for the additional scope of what this project could include. So back in 2017, when we were doing the San Pablo Fortieth Street Bus Hub project improvement that we had received a grant for, I requested and received majority support from the council at that time to examine putting in bicycle facilities with bus priority lanes down the Fortieth Street corridor from the city border with Oakland to the IKEA and Bay Trail entrance. That received unanimous support, and over the course of the following couple of years, the city staff, in partnership with the consultant, began what we call just initial design concept work to bring back a concept that would function and be compatible with other uses in the community. They brought that back, and I believe in 2020, the council adopted a go-ahead to go and move this into a further design phase, and we began seeking funding for that project. This is a very, as was mentioned by several of the speakers, this is a very desirable project to be funded by the city, but also by the county and state partners, who are looking for cities to make these types of investments for safety reasons, but also to create more multimodal opportunities in communities for social and economic reasons. As this came before the Transportation Committee moving through the process, the concept came up that there could be additional benefits on the safety side provided to the community if the non-signalized crossings were closed. So we, as a committee, asked staff to look into that. Staff did do that, and they brought back several months ago for our consideration at committee to recommend to the council to consider going out for additional scoping, which would be doing additional design work, examining how a design at these crossings could be accomplished with a closure. I want to now take the chance to thank the members of the business community, the Park Avenue Business HOA members, who I've had a chance to meet with. I want to thank the members from Granite Expo, who I've had a chance to meet with. Very productive meetings, because I think that the key here is for me to emphasize the importance of balance, as was discussed by several people, finding the balance in balancing safety and the economic needs of the community. With that, I just want to kind of frame what the conversation could be by saying that tonight I will be supporting only partial closures at Watts and Holden Street, where only the southbound lane would be closed to traffic and the northbound lane would accommodate truck movement and the other vehicle movement. This can be designed and accomplished. These intersections do have a width and a right-of-way that accommodate the trucks that service those businesses. And there are ways, even with the Granite Expo concern about Park Avenue, the staff have identified ways to make modifications either at those intersection turns or at 45th Street to turn out to Hollis that would accommodate trucks that service the Granite Expo. I agree with public commenters who said, people do adapt. When you make infrastructure changes, which we do a lot of here in the city, people adapt regularly. Businesses adapt regularly. Really good businesses ask us what's coming so that they can prepare for that, and we are always happy to partner with that. As for the other two streets, the residents at the Bessler Building expressed a lot of excitement and interest at the closing for Haven Street for reasons that are particular to them, I think. And as for Hubbard Street, the intersection is part of a JPA, and the city of Emeryville has planning authority over that JPA. So we have the planning decisions on it. And because I can go into more specifications about why I believe Hubbard should be completely closed, but the primary reason is that that is at the foot of a bridge and with a dual-directional bike lane, I do not want to be in a position where a vehicle turning out onto Fortieth Street, making a right turn, and only looking left does not look to the right, and there's a child coming down a bike lane on a bridge who becomes the victim of road violence in this town. There are adequate pieces of information at a preliminary phase here that support the fact that any traffic impacts are extremely minimal, if any. In fact, the traffic counts that we saw and the times that were presented in some of the meetings I attended showed that there would actually be transit time and traffic time improvements because of changed behaviors by drivers. As was mentioned by some folks, the turning of vehicles at places that aren't signalized does actually impact traffic movement. Beyond that, I want to, you know, just also observe for those who aren't familiar at the council that the Granite Expo does own a parking lot on Holden Street, which can be serviced with having accommodating northbound traffic. So there is an off-street parking lot for them. I would like to note additionally that the traffics, the request for additional traffic studies, that will come as part of the additional analysis. We will do additional review as to how designs impact other parts of the community. But at the end of the day, the primary goal of every community is to be safe. And that isn't something that is just taken in a vacuum or in isolation from all the other things we've heard about today, but the goal in this community is to provide safety. And there is an exorbitant amount of evidence that shows that good bike pedestrian design does several things. One, it invites more people into businesses. For those who aren't familiar, I chaired the Alameda County Transportation Commission. I have spent a lot of time traveling and visiting other cities and their bike infrastructure and seeing the economic benefits of projects like this for their business communities. The city of Vancouver's Business Chamber was one of the most vocal opponents to their bicycle implementation plan. And after the first year and the return on receipts the business has experienced, the Business Chamber is now one of the leading advocates and sponsors for implementation of the bike plan in Vancouver. So this is a change, and I understand that change can be challenging when we're accustomed to operating a certain way in the status quo, but it is possible to improve safety in this community while also accommodating business in a way that makes it feasible for all of these good uses in the city to go forward. So this evening, I will be supporting the resolutions, and I will be asking that the guidance we give related to closures is limited to full closures at Hubbard and Haven and partial closures southbound only to prevent conflicts with bicycles at Watts and Holden. I recognize Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, as we heard from the commenters, both in person and over-the-phone residents and business owners, who I thank for taking the time out of their evening to speak tonight, there's clearly trade-offs, right? And there's not, there has to be a compromise here. However, as somebody who has biked on Fortieth Street, it's treacherous business. The value of this project, if we take a step back, it's really to make this a viable conduit for alternate transit options. So I'm trying to imagine vehicles crossing sidewalk, bidirectional bike lane. I think that's hard to do safely. I'm interested in some of the possible compromise solutions, so I'm open to that. But I came prepared to support the full closure of these unsignalized intersections.
Member Pryforce.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kalima Pryforce, a council member here. Some of you I'm meeting for the first time. So there's two things that I'd like to start with. One is that I don't know how to drive. I don't know how to drive from New York. Actually, driving terrifies me. And so I have a bicycle as my primary means of transportation. That's it. A bicycle is the primary means of transportation, and Uber. So that's important. And as well as, I don't know if you've seen me with a walking stick, and so I have, I guess now it would be considered a disability, that forces me, if I don't want to lose balance and strength in one of my legs, I have to use a walking stick. And so as a pedestrian, this project is important to me. As a cyclist, this project is important to me. But I want to also share an experience when one of the big companies here in Emeryville, they did a presentation for me to talk about their business. And they went through the entire presentation, and they said that they presented before council members before, and, you know, state legislators, that sort of thing. And by the time they were done, I asked them, I noticed that there's no diversity, equity, inclusion in any of your slides. I noticed that there's no social responsibility in none of your slides. Like, what's going on with that? And they said, oh, I'm sorry, no one has ever asked us that before. I have owned several businesses, sold several businesses. And for some of your businesses, for some of the properties that you have owned and the businesses that occupy them, when I walk into them, there's a lot of workers who look like me. Thank you. Thank you, small businesses. Thank you for surviving that damn pandemic. A lot of businesses were lost, still suffering, so busy that they can't even come out here tonight. But I'm sure that they want to be here to express their support of you. Now, part of this is kind of your fault. I don't know if you've noticed it, but most of the people who've been pro this project unchanged are members of the B-PAC, right? You notice that? Majority of them, right? Or one, like, who's like a partner of a member of the B-PAC. And then it's like, and it's mostly them versus y'all. Not having an Emeryville Chamber of Commerce is the reason why this is happening. It's because your voice isn't as represented as it should be. You're powerful. If you guys work together, I mean, you guys will go your separate ways, but, I mean, already look what happens when you guys talk to one another. We're talking about looking at partial closures, right? You guys have got to start working together, start talking to one another, and then talk to us, not when there's a crisis, not when there's something that actually affects your business. This is why something like this is hard to do in Oakland or Berkeley, because we don't have you guys united and working with one another. So one of the things that I heard a commenter say was, well, I'm surprised that the business community feels this way, and I think that that's what's wrong with the B-PAC. Now, many of you don't know some of the politics in Emeryville. We just appointed a real estate lobbyist to our housing committee. And so there's a philosophy. You're fighting an ideology, right? The mayor talked about the scope of project. And the word "scope" has its root in "scopos," Greek, which is to aim, to target. There's a target. And in the ideology, it's called the 15-minute city, which is that when you're on a bicycle, you can go from one part of the city to another part of the city. You can get all your needs met in under 15 minutes. So that is what you're fighting. You're fighting an ideology that's coming straight from Sacramento, straight from lobbyists, straight from many of us. That's what you're fighting. And so, you know, I understand that accidents happen. I understand that people can be hurt and threatened, and that's why we need these protected bike lanes. I understand that. But one thing that is of concern when it comes to these closures, partial or not, is how we maintain them. Because my brother was shot and killed in New York on one of these closures because they were poorly maintained. And we've seen some of these spaces in Emeryville collect some people who unfortunately may not be... They draw in a lot of crime and attention from our officers. And so I've seen what some of these closures are in Berkeley and in Oakland. That has been an issue. Some of them work, some of them don't work. And so, you know, I agree with you that there needs to be better dialogue, a better study. There needs to be a better conversation, not just us talking to you and telling you what we want to do, but you guys actually telling us, because you are Emeryville. You are Emeryville. And so, you know, I just want to say that I am supportive of partial closures. I believe that our amazing staff have even explored for Granite Expo a way for the trucks to, for that system to work. I think, Ryan, that you could present that if you'd like. It's interesting, I also heard that buses are a priority, but, you know, when I walk across the street from Emeryville, once again, if I don't have my bike, I have my stick, I would love for there to be a bus stop right across the street on Park from City Hall, and people who want to come to City Hall right across the street. If I see an Emery go around, I have to, like, run to a bus stop. And then I've heard students at Emory High complain that there also isn't a bus stop that's near them. So I don't know if we really believe that buses are a priority. I just want to make sure that wherever place that we get to, we get to through honest conversation about what we need, what we see, and what we feel. And that's the only way that we can really, truly test our democracy, even in a local town like Emeryville. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Just want to thank staff, and I, everyone's made their comments, and I just wanted to add- add to Member Mora and Mayor Batters' comments that there has been a lot of discussion around mitigating safety concerns and business concerns and potential hiccups in the rerouting and the education around the rerouting. And I'm in support of the partial closures. We have two great council members on the Transportation Committee. We have a great staff behind this project. And so hearing what I've heard tonight, hearing from the public, I feel that that would be the best plan of action, is to move forward with the partial closures. And that this, thank you for explaining a lot of the concerns that were brought up tonight, which are valid, and we want to make sure that the concerns are being addressed and that the public does understand that there are trade-offs, as Member Mora had mentioned, and that that is always in the forefront of any type of redesign that we move forward with here in the city of Emeryville. We want to make sure that we are mitigating any type of negative effects that might happen when any type of redesign, but safety is always going to be paramount. That is a part of our value system here as a city. And so just to state again, I am in support of the partial closures. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the public for coming and expressing your opinions today. I thank all of these people who came. I have seen this presentation before at the Transportation Committee. At that time, we didn't have this robust feedback, and today I took down a lot of these comments. And I have actually seen our staff work really, really hard to get to Vision Zero in the city. I know this mayor works really hard to get to Vision Zero. And today, after hearing all your concerns, we are going down to partial closures to balance the business needs. So instead of full closures of the street, I do support the resolutions as they are with the partial closures. I wish I had heard more of this feedback. At the time, when the Transportation Committee meeting was going and this was open to the public, at that time, we did have the opportunity to maybe do some, someone had, someone today said there should be another study or a more comprehensive study. We've done that. We've tried to, we have tried to do the outreach. I know that there have been a lot of attempts, and you've seen those on the slides. So it would have been great to have this engagement before. I am glad that your comments were taken into account and that we are going for partial closures for at least two of these streets instead of full closures. And I'm hoping that mitigates some of those concerns. Other than that, I can make a motion to support these resolutions with the partial closures.
Okay, second? So before we do that, what I'd like, you can take a seat, staff. I don't think there's other questions for you at this time. So what I'd like to do is clarify, because there are four resolutions, and so you're making a motion on the first resolution, which is 12.1.1. And in the whereas clauses, where it says that moving forward with the concept of closures, I'd just like to clarify, closures at Haven and Hubbard and partial closures at Watts and Holden is your motion?
Correct.
Okay, and so staff, are you going to amend the resolution to reflect that? And that is your second?
Yes.
Okay. So on item 12.1.1, Madam Clerk, there's a motion by Carr and a second by Mora to approve that the staff can move forward with further, will be discussed in a moment, further conceptual review of the Transportation Committee's recommendation to study additional closures with full closures proposed at Hubbard and Haven and only partial southbound closures at Watts and Holden. Okay, that's the motion, Member Pryforce. Do you have a debate on the motion?
Yes, I'd like to put forth another motion for all four to become partial closures.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Your substitute motion dies for lack of a second. There's a motion by Carr and a second by Mora. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Batters?
Aye. That resolution is approved. The second resolution before us is Resolution 12.1.2. And members, that resolution is a resolution of the City Council approving the additional new scope of work, which is related to the additional street design for the contractor, which I believe was the $120,000 figure, Ryan. Is that correct? That is correct. Is there a member who would like to make a motion to approve this resolution?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Carr and a second by Mora to approve the resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Batters?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item 12.1.3 is the resolution of the City Council of the city of Emeryville, adding the new scope of work for the additional designs of the Fortieth Street multimodal project Phase 2, which is the Bay Trail gap closure between the IKEA and Christie Avenue. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion on this item?
Sure, I'll make the motion to approve the item.
Second.
There's a motion by Carr and a second by Mora to approve the item. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Batters?
Aye. That resolution is approved. Item 12.1.4 is a resolution of the City Council of the city of Emeryville, authorizing the city manager to execute a First Amendment to the professional services contract with Diablo Engineering Group for additional services described in Exhibits A, I'm sorry, Exhibits A1 and A2, will be what it says now in the resolution, and to increase the total compensation by $760,000? $776,000 and change. With that being the figures, is there anyone willing to make a motion to include those numbers?
Sure, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion by Carr and a second by Mora. Question from Pryforce?
So is this for the Fortieth Street project, or for the Bay Trail, or for both?
Well, it's a contract that will include both items. So it's a contract that takes both professional services into account, yes. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
Mayor Batters?
Aye, the resolution is approved. That concludes item 12.1. Item 13 is department head reports. Are there any this evening?
There aren't, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, item 14 is future agenda item requests. Are there any members who wish to request a future agenda item? Member Pryforce.
So the cannabis industry has been a great contributor financially for the city of Emeryville, but unfortunately, none of our cannabis industry companies in Emeryville are minority-owned. And I would particularly, would like to, for us to study the possibility of attracting a minority-owned business in the cannabis industry, dispensary, yeah, and especially if it's by a black woman, yeah.
So to turn that into an actionable item that the council can take action on, is this a request to have a study session about additional operator permits?
Yes.
Is there a majority of people who want to discuss additional cannabis operator permits at this time? There's not a majority of hands. It does not receive support. Is there any other future agenda item requests? Member Pryforce?
Yes, and so, of course, this was a test of democracy, and I hope that you guys were able to see how our city government works, and I hope that we continue to serve you. Unfortunately, the Pledge of Allegiance, whether we agree with it or not, was stricken from the process of being a part of the Emeryville City Council. And I don't think it was done with enough input from the people. And so I would like to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and my request is that it be added to the, to the future, to a future agenda item for study, for the return of Pledge of Allegiance to our proceedings.
So before, okay, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States for America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Here, here.
Is there, the Pledge of Allegiance was removed from council rules seven years ago. Is there somebody who wishes to put it on the agenda to debate this again, which we did extensively with the public? Okay, there's not a majority support. All right. So, Madam Clerk, the time is 9:45. It's adjourned.